Okay, John. We're good to go.
Recording in progress.
And where?
Call to order the Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 Town Council Committee of the Hall to order at 6:33. All councilors are present. Onto calendar and communications, Councilor Baumgartner.
Yes, good evening. This week had many, several meetings with constituents throughout the town. And just a friendly reminder to folks, as I mentioned last week, officially took the oath of office for state representative. If you have any bill ideas whatsoever or concepts you'd like your representatives or Senator Summers, Representative Connolly to raise, please reach out to us before Friday, as it is the bill deadline Friday at 5:00 PM. So if you can get it to us by Thursday, greatly appreciate it. And feel free to ask any questions as far as the legislative session goes. Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Various emails that all of us councilors received, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilor Franco.
Nothing to report, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, various emails. And I just wanted to highlight, I was at Thrive 55 today, and the Club 55 meetings were going on, and they have a monthly meeting. And it was just interesting on what they do. I had a nice conversation with them. I just thought it was nice to highlight some of the things that they do. So over the last two years, they've donated $10,000. And every year, they do four academic scholarships to grow out students. They equip the seniors' exercise room. They did a washer and dryer for the kitchens, lockers for the exercise room. They support the sub-vets. They do yearly food assistance, yearly fuel assistance. And anyone who's 55 or over can join. It's a $5 fee. And you can just do it at the main desk, and you get discounts on all the Club 55. So it's just nice to kind of, it's a very active group, and they just donate a lot to our community, and that would be nice to highlight.
Thank you. Councilor McBride?
Thank you. Last Tuesday, we held the Property Reuse Committee meeting with Councilor Bordelone and Councilor Westervelt were there as well. We continue to work on developing a PowerPoint presentation to bring, and there's four other committee members as well that participate actively. We continue to work on a, we're developing a presentation to bring to the council for their review and feedback to ensure we're heading down the right path. And we hopefully should have that ready, I would say, over the next month or so, to get the council's feedback. Other than that, just various forms of communications that all the councilors receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelone?
Thank you. I received the communications as stated, you know, as stated, I went, you know, was at the Property Reuse Committee, again encouraging all, you know, community members and the constituents to come out. If you have any interest and, you know, any ideas, there's always public comment available. Also want to congratulate our colleague up here, Councilor Baumgartner, for taking his seat. It was a wonderful thing to watch on TV. I had to record it. So graduation also to Chris Connolly and Heather Summers as well. Let's see. In light of the, you know, the events happening, I've had people asking me about AED machines and things like that. You know, as we know, there was a football player from Direct Contact. There was out in California, a high school student that collapsed that had a possible underlying condition of lupus that was not diagnosed. I did send an email out to the town manager, and he did nicely state back that he would be looking into where our AED machines are. I, after that point, then did get off the phone and start calling around as a resident, just seeing where we are. Not kind of to say, Groton's not performing at that level, but where can we possibly look to do better in some areas? Areas where I, you know, I had found was the, the Groton Public Library does not have an AED machine. The Senior Center does. Par Four has one in between the pro shop and the restaurant. And our current community center, there might be one in an office, but not one out where someone could grab it like a family member or, you know, a non-staff member. So this, as I said, the Senior Center had one. Human Service Building did not have one. Also looking at possibly Paquana Plains Park as well as Esker Point. So I'm not sure if I have to send a referral or not, but I just think it'd be really great to make sure that we have AED machines in all of our town facilities, as well as our town annex, which does not have an AED machine. So moving forward, it might be something that we can either fund or fund out of rescue funds as a medical thing. So these are the communications I'll be sending forward. I know John sent a message back to me. I sent the message to the town manager, directly to him, and then he included in his response all the other councilors and said that, you know, I had to go through whom and get approval if I identified myself. So I just identified myself as a resident, just inquiry-based. I did not speak to any department heads at all. So I was not crossing any of those lines, but it was CC to the whole council. So I wanted that just on the record. But my hope is to better, not only for the employees of Groton, but also the residents, to make sure AED machines are available and also maybe look at a way to make sure more staff are trained on how to use them. So I guess my question under, when he reports, if I can, would I have to send a referral to the town manager, or would you like me, is that something we're just going to look into? Thank you.
Sure, I'll have the complete list by tomorrow. Arneisha's working on it. She does want to speak with our liability insurance, just to talk about that. And then I'd have some hesitancy to have ones outside where people could, yeah. Like, one thing is to have them in a building during sporting events, that type of thing. But we'll have to talk more through that. But you don't need to say anything. We're working on it. I definitely want to get them in all the main facilities.
As far as like Esker Point, Paquana Bridge, it could be in the building.
Yeah.
So when they have like concerts in the park, it's there on site.
That's what I'm thinking. And I do know Parks and Rec, they keep one at Spicer House, and they take it to events, they take it to the concerts and that type of thing.
Thank you. That's something else, I won't send a, I won't send a referral forward, but I look forward to seeing possibly, you know, one here at the annex and the library and the human resource building, so.
And just say, I was told there was one at the annex, so I'll have to double check on that, so.
Yeah, if there is one, it's not like, most places have them. It should be not just for the staff.
Yeah, I agree.
Someone out here should be able to run out that's trained or not trained and grab it out of the case and be able to access it.
Oh, I agree.
Which we don't have in the foyer here. Thank you.
Councilor Westervelt?
Thank you very much. Gotten various communications, as everyone else had said. Also attended the Property Reuse Committee meeting. Most of the emails that I did get revolved around the Mystic Educational Center and what might be happening up there. And we did get an email from the town manager today that the governor's office had, I guess, acknowledged his FOI. So that's it. Thank you.
Just a mention I forward, Representative Connolly has reached out to both AG's office and governor's office. They're reporting to her that there's nothing happening with it, but I still think it's better safe than sorry and stay on top of it, so.
Just a point of information. I think if you did not receive the email as a counselor, people watching or here might not know what email we're talking about. So could someone just clarify, like, maybe the mid-town manager what?
Sure, yeah.
Was sent as a communication?
Yeah, and I expect the newspaper, I had reached out to him with questions, so I expect, I'm actually surprised there's not something yet. But we had got some word that unofficially, so it's rumor at this point, that maybe the governor was looking to proceed with the sale of the Mystic Ed Center. So just as a precaution, I sent something to the governor making it clear our opposition as well as submitting FOIA requests to the AG's office and governor's office for any communications involving it. And then our legislators are involved in monitoring also, so. And Mosa, as the Mystic Oral School advocates, has also been notified, just to keep an eye out on things.
Very good. Councilor Garcia?
Good evening. I've received various emails regarding the Complete Streets policy and input regarding that matter, ARPA, RTM issues, a notification that Groton has won a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, Mystic Education Center, a FOIA request, the North Stonington Bridge budget information, and the Mystic River Apartments complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to meet the Secretary of Transportation along with the RTM moderator and the town manager, as well as Representative Baumgartner. He announced a $158 million project that will be used to refurbish the northbound I-95 Gold Star Bridge. So with that, Councilor Bordelone?
Also, I just want to keep in mind, last year, we did something for Black History Month. Next month is Black History Month again, and it was great, you know, as something that I took a hold of and kicked off. I was told that DEI would also, they supported last year and that they would possibly help take it over. I just wanted to check to the town manager, because folks have asked me, is there any plan? And I was going to send something today saying I'm willing to be a part of it and help, you know, any way that I can. So I just wanted to check and see if there's been any communications, under communications, for DEI to do anything for the town this year.
I'll check tomorrow with Arneisha, we'll get back to you.
All right, so I will send also a thing saying I'm willing to help organize again this year since we're down to only a few weeks, as we're already in 11, 10 days already into January. So for that, John, to collaborate with the DEI, just should I just send my referral forward to collaborate and have a, okay, perfect, thank you.
And I just, just to say, I just got a text from Arneisha that they're reorganizing right now, regrouping, so it may be difficult to take it on this time. But I'll talk a little more tomorrow.
All right, that's fine. And I'm willing to just even, even if we did something, we still have the flags, I assume, and everything else.
Yeah.
We can just do a small kickoff to Black History Month, you know.
Yeah, we'll definitely.
And I'm willing to take it on.
Yeah, we'll definitely get the flags up. And I believe the town clerk said she was doing a proclamation, I think, yeah.
All right, so I'll take it on. Thank you.
Onto the approval of minutes. I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Hall meeting minutes for December 13th, 2022. So move.
Second.
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Baumgartner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Care is unanimously nine in favor. Onto new business. Mystic parking study implementation and next steps. Here we have Director Reiner, as well as First Selectwoman of Stonington. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. Also on the line is John Burke, our consultant, that's been working with us on the project. So we kind of wanted to just check in with all of you tonight, give you an update on where we are, and then talk about some of our next steps as we've been talking about parking management in Mystic for a while. You know, the town has done a number of studies. The towns have done a number of studies long before either one of us were in these positions, but more recently doing the parking implementation plan that we wrapped up about a year or so ago. And now the second phase, doing a little bit of a deeper dive into that. So since the last time that we met with this council, I think it was back in March of 2022, we have put together a task force, which is put together of about 22 folks from both towns of Stonington and Groton. And we've met twice with that group, looked at a number of different options for parking management, such as metering, shared lot agreements, employee parking programs. Have met with some of the larger property owners, the churches, to talk about some shared lot agreements and refine down some of the options for, you know, active parking management, which is, you know, that big elephant in the room, the pay parking program. What we've realized is that, you know, there are now other folks in the area charging for parking. Over the past couple of years, we've seen what the Mystic Seaport has done with the shuttle and opening up that other trend, kind of outside of, you know, what we look at as downtown Mystic lot, that people can park in and then shuttle in. I think continuing to work with and support that program is a big part of it. But as we look at metered parking and giving people the incentive to think about where they park, and especially setting a stronger time limit on the areas that we want to see the most turnover, as we look at this parking, you know, a lot of people ask, well, what's the cost? The infrastructure? A lot of the analysis that John Burke, our consultant, has looked at on this is that this program will pay for itself in less than a year. And once we start generating additional revenue for that, we can be putting that revenue towards things like more infrastructure, better sidewalks, crosswalks, and if possible, expanding the number of off-street parking spaces also. That's kind of the general overview. You know, the referral memo kind of touches on a few things. I don't know if First Selectwoman wants to mention anything also.
You know, just add that, you know, we're here for any questions you want to ask us. And also just to say, we have the Chair of our Board of Finance and our Board of Police Commission here at the meeting. Also, they've been integral in some of this work. And then also, one of the members of the task force came tonight. He's a local, long-term resident in downtown Mystic. So we're all here, if you guys have questions for us or want to talk in more detail about any of this. But we're really excited and really quite grateful to your staff, because they've taken on the lion's share of this work and led this process, and it's been really helpful. So thank you.
And, you know, the one last thing, as we start thinking about those next steps, as we're getting into budget season and CIPs, if we're going to start moving forward on this for an upcoming time period, we need to start thinking about that now.
Yeah, and then maybe, just so I can be clear, we, on this one, we've kind of been waiting, and we were happy to wait, but we are ready to move. And we're, I spent all day today doing budget stuff. So we're starting our budget process right now, and this will be on our side of the budget. We'll see if the Board of Finance passes it. But, you know, we've been talking about this for about two years now. So I do think we're ready to move on the Stonington side, and obviously, we prefer to do it in collaboration with you all.
Councilor Bordelone?
Thank you. Just wanted to welcome you from Stonington. It's great to work with you and have you here to collaborate. So I know this came before the council on the Groton side. There were some communications, and folks had hoped, we had that presentation, and John, like I said, I was familiar with his stuff from Portsmouth, New Hampshire, which was really excellent to see as a person who lived up there for a short time. I got to see his great work, so I followed this. And the folks up there are forever grateful to that, the way in which they handled their downtown, which is a wonderful place to visit. And has, you know, plenty of parking and connectability. Things that I had brought up was, you know, folks were asking for public transportation downtown. You know, right now, there's currently no seat bus that goes through there, and it's something I would utilize on a Friday night, so I didn't have to park in the middle of the summer. I have seen some efforts on the Stonington side from the parking lot, where you guys have put in shuttle runs, which is wonderful, great outside-of-the-box thinking, and really a nice way to kind of bring folks in from a little further out. But what I feel is missing, and I only can speak from the Groton side, is folks have asked for, and I had brought it up, and it did not get passed by the group of councilors up here as a recommendation. I think we're at the point now where we need to have a public hearing on this and bring all these ideas to the community. So my question is for Stonington, did you guys have a public thing, where not just a presentation, but where people could respond to it?
That's a great question. And also, I want to give the Mystic Seaport full credit for the shut-off.
Oh, great.
They've been running with that. And another reason why I think we're eager to get started is they've been patiently waiting, and kind of their whole model really hinges on us moving towards paid parking. But, no, we've had, like we mentioned, the two kind of larger group discussions, which obviously were publicly posted, and people could have attended. But our goal would be hopefully, pending how this meeting tonight goes, is to have a larger community meeting, hopefully for both sides in, towards the end of January or sometime in February. Obviously, also working around the wonderful consultant on the screen schedule as well. And again, we wouldn't, on our side, we wouldn't have like a formal public hearing, but more of a, we've been trying to do more kind of community conversations where people can kind of engage and have more discussions and be a little bit more informal, because we've found we've gotten some better feedback that way. But obviously, we'd work with you guys for, if we were going to do it jointly, for what would work best.
Yeah. I thank you for that. I think it's important to have both. I mean, sometimes on the record, it's nice to have, it can be a community, but it is important to let people come speak to their concerns. Now that there's something drafted somewhat, now people need to have a chance to voice, you know, how they feel, what maybe is missing. Maybe there's some ideas that we're not aware of. So I just hope that that's our next steps. And I think it's really, really critical when we present something that it is affecting the people who live in and around that area. I know the church that I attend is one of the parking lots that is going to be utilized. And, you know, it is, it's just, it's really nice to have a chance for people to have open dialogue, where they have a chance to get up to the mic and then get feedback, so, and take all those concerns. So that's what I'm hoping to see next steps. So from the town side, I guess, too, are, you know, do we have anything set up or an idea of when we think we were going to be doing that?
So we were going to be working, again, tonight, we're coming to looking for direction. We have not made any decisions, because these decisions are up to the council as a whole. We were planning on working with Stonington to have some type of a, you know, a public meeting, a community conversation focusing on downtown Mystic on both sides, whether we did it in two separate nights. Or I think it would be better and more efficient and maybe a little bit more lively if we did it for both Stonington and Groton at the same night. We haven't necessarily picked a place yet. But again, we're looking for some direction from the council, because we haven't gotten a real thumbs up or thumbs down on how you want to proceed. And before we move forward, we need some direction.
Yeah, so my direction at the last meeting was to have some public output. So if we do do a collaborative group, I think one should be done in Stonington, one should be done in Groton. There are a lot of elderly that live in the housing around the Senior Center. That would be a great place to do it at. And that way, people that maybe don't have the transportation or have concerns, that way, we're not, you know, boxing anyone out that can't get there. So if we do it, I think, two nights, or, you know, one in Stonington, one in Groton. If it's going to be just a kind of round robin discussion, great. Maybe it should be recorded, so people can review it, so that way, we can hear all of the questions and suggestions that people are asking. So that would be my recommendation. I would encourage the council, too, before moving forward, anything, making sure we have that forum set up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McBride?
Thank you. Couple things, just want to say, I appreciate the approach and how much detail is going into this, what I consider to be a serious problem that we have. So thank you for all the work that's been done on this. Couple things, I went through and reviewed the financials, and everything looks solid. But I do have a couple of questions in terms of, once it's up and operational, are you looking to, you know, do an RFP to get someone like LaaS to run it? Or are we looking to hire internally? Because the net revenue, a little over 400, is probably, you know, that's probably six or seven people. Is that sufficient? And have we reviewed the operational component of how that will be done? Because it does say it doesn't include labor costs, credit card transactions, I'm assuming point of sale, you know, all those type of things. So that would be my question, just how it's going to be handled once it's up and operational. And the other thing I would like to maybe have this council consider, whether or not we move forward with a public hearing, is if there's a way we can try to do this outside the budget process with potentially ARPA dollars or something else? Because if we're going to go through the budget process, this won't be ready until 2025 or '24. So it would be nice to have something in place for 2024, or 2023, this upcoming summer. So I'm not sure if that's possible, but that's something I would like to see if we can, so. Thank you.
So we quickly, I'll try to address some of those. I might have John Burke, John Burt, also helped me on those. But how to run the program, I think we'd be looking towards the council again for direction. We could get staff, depending on the size of the program that we have. If we start off with, you know, a couple of small areas, that might be something that we could do with existing staff, or bring a little bit of folks on. Or we could RFP, get a firm like LaaS, which is already managing parking a little bit in the greater Mystic area. So that was question one. Question two on funding and timeline, so we did actually put this money in the last year's CIP. And I think we'd asked for that via ARPA funding, but it did not make it through the budgetary process. Again, that's something that, you know, could we do that as part of ARPA? That's up to the council. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that anymore, John? Burke, not Burke.
I think we could probably get it in time for the CIP. I think we have numbers. If the council wanted, we could always put it in there and not use it and shift it to another one if you wanted to. I'm not sure if we'll do another round of ARPA anytime soon until we see what some of the, whether the seed wall goes in the city and some of that, so. I've heard at least try for the CIP this year. And then, and then we'll, Stonington will know whether we're serious or not about potentially moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I just, excuse me, that could be considered, because I know last year, I think you presented in the springtime, and there was a rush to try to get something done last year, and we obviously didn't move in that direction. So it would be good to have something for next summer, if possible. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner?
Thank you. And just want to acknowledge the First Selectperson of Stonington. Thank you for coming out this evening to the other side of the river. And also want to acknowledge the two chairs of the Finance and the Police Commission. Thank you for coming. Just out of curiosity, I understand that, like, just in Groton, for example, our traffic authority chaired by our police chief. And in the case of the town of Stonington, the traffic authority is the Police Commission. So my question is, would any of these changes also have to go through the Police Commission? And have they indicated sort of their position on this? And would it require any street changes, or?
I wrote, yeah, I think I said Chairman Ashanti has sat in on this since probably two years ago when we started this. It was wonderful having him involved in all the meetings. And I think we're kind of all on the same page on our side. And so I think we could kind of move seamlessly forward. We did get a new police chief in the midst of all this, but we brought him up to speed. And again, I think your point, we're going to balance it in the beginning, but we think we could take a lot of this on in-house at first, and we'll see how it goes and kind of move from there.
And secondly, I think this would apply to both communities, but just the impacts on the residents that live within those zones or the streets immediately impacted by the metered parking. Has there been any, throughout the sort of outreach process and ideation process, what was the feedback from those residents through the work of John Burke led?
If you wouldn't mind, I'd love to. We have Paul Sardar, who's, I think, a 37-year resident of downtown Mystic. And he was part of this task force, but he was kind of there to help represent the views of, he lives on Washington Street, for those familiar, it's right by the playground in downtown Mystic. But if Paul wants to share anything. We don't all always agree, so.
Do you want me to start talking? Paul Sardar, yeah, live at 12 Jackson Avenue in downtown Mystic. Yeah, I've been involved from the get-go. First Selectman Danielle brought me in right away. Been involved with other things in town. Shared what we've been doing, what we've been talking about to my neighbors, to the area. And we understand Stonington Police Commission, a year ago, lined a lot of our streets to help segregate parking, to help stop people from parking in front of our driveways, blocking our driveways, stopping right-of-way, things like that. So our Police Commission and our First Selectmen have been on this for a while, for a few years, addressing issues downtown with us. And you guys on the Groton side have it even worse, frankly. It's so, your streets are actually tighter. I mean, I've lived in town for 37, 38 years, know what's going on. Ran on the Park Commission. I'm also a member of the Executive Board of Mystic Fire District, also right now. So pretty tight and in tune. We understand we've got to, we've got to control it somehow. And we see this as the first step. And our downtown residents have an idea that it's coming. And I think it's a step in the right direction. We're also going to work to address, hopefully, resident parking, neighborhood resident parking. We'll have to see, one step at a time, see how this works, see how enforcement works at the police department, and then, and again, just take it one step at a time. We're fortunate that in Stonington, we have been working on this for a long time. We've got a little smaller ship to turn around. You guys are more of an aircraft carrier. We're kind of PT mode, just by the structure of our governments. So I wish you luck, but I'm happy that we're moving forward. Any other questions?
No, I like that analogy a lot. And then as far, Councilor Bordelone brought it up a bit, but just as far as kind of, you know, utilizing other modes of transportation to move, you know, folks in and out of Stonington. Obviously, you know, the traffic issues not stem from the people who live here. It's by It's by virtue of, you know, a lot of visitors, which is a good problem to have, you know, obviously for our small business community and certainly our restaurants. But there is also, you know, the other side of that, the impacts on the residents. So, you know, as was mentioned, you know, it certainly has helped having the shuttle provided by the Mystic Seaport, and also the additional parking, as was mentioned, by there. But, you know, as far as you, you know, investments in bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, shuttles, you know, how, how does that kind of go in hand in hand with this, the parking plan?
So I'll jump in on that. So again, to help create some of that revenue source, that's where the, you know, parking meters come in handy. We have been in contact with C to talk about what additional routes, frequency of routes, how can we expand on that? So that's something that we have looked at. And our, I think John was just sending some emails out on, you know, again, trying to come back around with them to talk about some of the next steps.
Just to mention, yeah, Mike Carroll at C is putting together some options. He's also sent us some information on some proposed routes to the state. And so we're going to get together soon and talk about that. And this would be an ideal way to, you know, it's good, if we have to help pay for it, it's going to be pretty significant costs for a route, and so this would be a way to help pay for it. Though I would say I don't expect a route would have near the impact that, like, that parking in Mystic would have. You know, that's a whole different thing. The bus route would be locally, but it wouldn't have that same visitor impact, so.
And I understand currently, at least on the Groton side, LAS did take over the, or LAS Parking took over operations for the Mystic parking, or the parking lot, and, or owned by the, the Art Center Association. My question is, kind of how, how does that work? Kind of happened overnight, if you will. You know, is there, do they just have the ability simply to charge? Or, I know they charged for parking in the past, but LAS has seemed to have kind of an increased footprint kind of in the downtown. So just kind of seeking, any knowledge you have on that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, they can work with private property owners that have parking lots, and that's what they're doing. And I think we've seen, what, you know, what we've heard, and I think John has a little bit of knowledge on this, too, is it's helped improve efficiencies. And I think the folks that are working with LAS are very happy with it.
But does, does that have to go through any zoning approvals? Is that permitted, just?
The one, Leah Roach's Harpen Hound, the parking next to that, did have to go through planning and zoning, but if there's an existing parking lot, they, I'm trying to think, I think the Art Association did do some changes there that may have needed either administrative site plan or some level of approval. But everyone's done everything that they needed to, from a regulatory standpoint.
Thank you. Well, I know you spent a lot of time on this, as you have, Mr. Anderson, Chris Burrow, and appreciate your volunteerism, and very much look forward to continuing to partner with each of you on this. Thank you.
Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Reiner, and for selectwoman. John, can you just give us a sense of, once you have funding, however that comes, what's the timeframe after that to be implementing, or to see meters on the streets?
Then I'll hand that question right off to John Burke. Wow, actually, that.
Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, you know, unfortunately, we're still, we're still dealing with the post-pandemic, and we're still, I'm not sure we're out of the pandemic, but we're still definitely dealing with lead time issues, as you're probably all aware of, through your construction projects. Same goes for parking equipment, very difficult to get, has to be procured. You know, there's ways for us to jump on national procurements to make that go faster. Getting the equipment is always the challenge, so even at this point, it would be very difficult to fully implement paid parking concept as proposed in, in the study. There may be an opportunity for this summer to, to provide a pilot, and this is something that's very popular in some of the other communities I'm working for, on the coast of New England, where they will put forward a portion of it, you know, perhaps it's a lot, or it's Main Street, in the case of Groton, Stonington, where they'll do a portion of that, because you can get the kiosks in that timeframe. That could certainly be done for this summer. Some of the other elements of the plan, you know, sort of connecting, permitting, shared lot agreements, and the shuttle, as we talked about, could be done. But probably full rollout of that may, may not be done within the timeframe that we'd like. Usually these roll out right around Memorial Day is, is the best time. Now, in Camden, Maine, we rolled out something in August last year for the same reason. Orders went in just about now, and that's kind of where we were able to get some, some of the paid parking going. But fortunately, these days, it's, it's been more of a six-month sort of lead time implementation to install, so. And there's a lot, also, I just want to make sure, there's a lot of background things that need to occur as well, within your own parking ordinance, changing, including paid parking elements in the ordinance. And sometimes that's done through an omnibus upgrade of your ordinance to expedite that. And then there's the physical background of it, just setting up the kiosk, types of languages we're going to, what currency we're going to use. There's, there's a lead-in on that that needs to occur. And then, as John mentioned earlier, there's the governance and the actual implementation of it, which is some of the decision points that we kind of talked about. When you have a paid parking program, there's really three elements. There's the enforcement, there's the kiosk itself that's managed remotely, okay, the management of that in real time, and then there's sort of the finance and the collection side. Small programs, like we're talking about here in Mystic, nine times out of 10, the community runs that on their own, without a LAS. But you have, because it's a joint two-town operation, and because you already have an operator in town, LAS, there are economic advantages, there should be, through an RFP for that operator, because they're already there, to provide you very competitive pricing. So it does have, there needs to be a discussion around those three elements in terms of how much we would want to conduct in-house versus subcontract out. You may want to do the enforcement, but say, hey, you know, let you guys take care of maintaining those kiosks. You know, if there's 15 or 20 kiosks, it's not a major effort, but if your public works doesn't want to handle that, that's a, so I'm roundabout way of saying, there's, there's that six-month process, there's a lot in there just beyond procurement, once you get the green light to go ahead.
Director, do we have a parking ordinance? Is that something that we need? Or what do we currently have? If John Bert's recommending, what do we, what do we currently have?
We would need to amend what we currently have.
Probably the same ordinance where we have fines for exceeding the two-hour, you know, parking limit, that kind of thing. So we have an ordinance that covers that kind of thing, I'd imagine, and it's just an update of that.
So you can modify it.
Yeah, we've made, we've modified it prior, too. We have the, the parking ticket amount to match what other communities were doing.
And that's the type of thing we would work with John, drafting language, you know, for both Groton, and I'm sure Stonington needs to do the same thing, and then taking that through the, you know, adoption, polycarrying process.
On, on the Stonington side, your government's smaller and might be more efficient. Do you, are you further ahead of us in terms of starting to implement this? Or just, do you just need to have the money and you can move forward? Or where are you at?
No, I'd say we're very similar to, we've been trying to do this in lockstep, and I think it's just that kind of conversation for tonight, where we are ready to move forward. And so if you guys need more time, that's understandable, but just to know, we, we will be moving forward, and so we don't want to all of a sudden have you say, wait, why is all the traffic flowing over here? Because we don't have paid parking. And so we'd like to keep doing this in lockstep if we could, and we think there's so many people even who live here don't always know which side of the river they live on, they just live in Mystic. So I think if we can do things together, put out an RFP together, kind of figure out what needs to happen, so we have the same kiosks, we have the same equipment going forward, that would be ideal. But again, just to say, you know, we are ready, we have a, the only thing I'd say we have on the books is a town meeting for February, tentatively February 27th, and the parking ordinance will be part of that, among other very fun topics.
So if that passed, you can probably start to, you'll start implementing and moving forward?
We'll start to do the funding part, but again, conversations with our board of finance, how we would do that, but we would like to do it, as you, you guys pointed out, potentially ahead of the typical budget process. Anything operating would have to go in this year, but potentially capital funding sooner than that.
Okay.
Council Cassiri?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here from, everyone from Stonington. I guess my first question is probably towards Mr. Burke. Does this program plan as written and utilizing the parking lots require the towns to pay those entities to use the parking lots?
I'm sorry, which entities?
The church, St. Mark's, the voting hall. Are we paying the churches to utilize those lots?
I think the, the Union Baptist Church already allows employee parking. They do allow that currently, and have indicated they would continue to be doing that. So that, that's something that they're doing already, that, that free parking exists. St. Mark's, we have talked with them, and the, with John and John, about the potential to, to have a shared lot agreement. There may be services that would be provided by the city to, to get use of that lot. There wouldn't be a cash payment in the concept, discussions that were had with them. It would be more of an in-kind services. And, and this is something that's very typical in other cities where, you know, a community will either plow their lot for you, for use of that lot, or, you know, sometimes they'll do crack sealing or something like that. So that's a, you know, it's a sort of an in-kind service and something like that. I think with the, on the Stonington side, Danielle can speak to that, that the, that lot is, is owned by the town for use, the fourth voting, voting hall lot. And then, you know, there's a number of streets as well that just aren't getting used, that are within a three or four-minute walk of the downtown. And they have a considerable amount of parking. And so with, you know, part of the recommendations is also to allow free parking in those areas for employees. It might be like Lincoln Street, or outer Washington Street in Stonington. You know, there's streets that are out behind CBS there that aren't being used. Up on the top of the hill, we have similar parking that in our council showed no, sometimes no cars on some of the streets up on the top of there. So, you know, there's areas that we could say to folks, you know, here's some places where you could move to in addition to those lots. And of course, the Art Center lot, that's paid.
Just to be clear, the, our ordinance will only cover our lot, our public parking. That'd be totally separate agreements with any other entities that, it wouldn't be per our ordinance, so.
Great. Thank you so much. So I am in favor of having a, a joint community conversation. I think it would be beneficial for everyone to come together so that there are not two separate conversations, because I feel like it would be helpful for both towns to kind of hear the same stuff and hear each other, so that we're kind of all on the same page. I am not sure how I feel about everything in this yet, but I am looking forward to having the community conversations, and I hope that would be our next direction. Thank you.
Council Boardland?
Thank you. I know it was stated that the, you know, public transportation with like C wouldn't be much as a tourist thing, but I'm looking at the local, I'm also looking at it in employment possibilities. I know a lot of the shops have a shortage of employees, and there's a lot of people who use public transportation that work some of these types of jobs. And having the transportation that brings them into that area brings in employment opportunities, because it's not currently being serviced. So maybe there's something from the state level that we can say, you know, helping out small businesses, and by bringing, everyone's looking for help, there might be some way to help get that funded, I'm not sure. As far as everything on here, I mean, this is like the first real look by, with the exception of getting it on Thursday. To say that I'm fully 100% sold on it and everything on here looks as it go, we haven't had many more meetings prior to this, and we only get to speak twice up here. So this is not, it's really hard to make a decision tonight, say yep. But I do think that that community conversation has to happen. I think it needs to be two separate dates, as stated, one in each town. And I do have concerns with the shared lots. You know, we need to make sure that we have something, I mean, if it snows, are we going to, you know, what if an employee that's working downtown Mystic falls on the church property? Are we helping, you know, shovel it? Are we going to help resurface it? Those are things that we have to dive deeper in eventually at some point, because, you know, I just, I get concerned with those types of partnerships. I don't think, you know, after hours, church parking lots are vacant, and they're not getting as much wear and tear, and now we're going to have a bunch of other people using them. So there is some communications, I think, that need to, to happen further. But definitely, I also have concerns that constituents that have reached out to me that live in downtown Mystic, who do not have driveways. Some of these older houses weren't meant to have cars, and they need to park on the road, and they don't want to pay. I wouldn't want to pay. So if they live on a road where there's a paid parking, how would that be addressed to make sure that they're, they have two or three cars, that they're not being charged? So that, that's another concern. They don't, and then if they're handicapped, or have a disability, or just want to bring their groceries in, they don't want to park way up over here where the free parking is, they want to park close to their residence. So we don't want to change the tapestry of the homeowner or the renter of that area, because that's what makes that place unique. And so we just have to, I don't see that addressed in here, but I, I think that's something else that I think is going to come out in that community conversation, that we really have to take a look at, how will that look on both sides? I'm not sure. Thank you.
If you want, I could address that issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the plan, really, the predominant metering is of the two-hour commercial zone. There is one very, very small mixed-use residential zone out to St. Mark's on Pearl Street, that, is it Pearl Street, I believe, so? That could have proposed metering in those areas, a lot of large driveways, big houses. There are some multifamily, so there would be an opportunity to have a residential permit for those sections that would be meted. It's a very small section. Other than that, it's all two-hour customer, commercial-only space for metering. So I just wanted to be clear about that, that we're not proposing to go into residential zones with meters, per se.
Thank you for clarifying that. And then my last bit of notes is making sure that some of the, one of the big things that people have been speaking about is the lack of handicap accessible parking. We really need to make sure that some of these meters are set up and are, are set for and reserved for folks with disabilities and/or handicap accessibility, so that those are in those high-traffic zones equally to the counterparts of regular spaces, so that people can frequent the shops. I think that's a really important thing to look at, and I just would like to see that addressed in this document as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Franco?
Thank you. Mr. Burke, can you tell me, how far will people normally walk when they come to, like just say they come in as tourists, or even residents, when there's an event, into an area? How far will they walk on the norm?
It's directly proportional to the cost of parking, the price of parking. So as we see, in the longest walk distances occur in the cities with the highest parking pricing, and the shortest walk occurs in those communities that have free parking. And so, and you think of it logically, in a, in a place where there's free parking, you'll often hear, people will talk about a, a three-to-five-minute walk, because it's on the other side of the world, and, you know, and, and in a, in a larger city that's charging a market rate. That would be considered an extremely short park, short walk, certainly to employee parking. So, you know, that's, it's not an easy one to answer in that regard, but what we can say of the difference between customers and employees is that even in those free areas, employees will tell you 500 feet to 1,000 feet to a parking space is reasonable. When we do these surveys, a customer will sometimes say, that's 200 feet or less. You know, and, and those folks, it makes sense, they're coming in for, to spend money, they're, they're looking for convenience, they're expecting to pay for that convenience, they're not expecting to have free parking in front of where they're going. So, you know, we've looked at studies where that short walk distance for the customer, it's important, because when, when you're not able to provide that availability, and you're not able to provide that in Mystic in the downtown, on, in your two-hour zone, when you're not able to provide that availability coming into the lunchtime period, you lose business, because there are some folks within that who can't park within that 200-feet distance, perhaps because an employee's taking their space, or, or an owner. And so that's really what you're up against here in Mystic, is trying to satisfy those walk distant, reasonable walk distance for different user groups, getting the employees to that three-to-five-minute zone and having to that three-to-five-minute zone and having the customers have availability near the stores.
And how far is the three-to-five-minute walk? Are you talking a half a mile?
Quarter-mile is a five-minute walk roughly, based on average walking speeds, it's about a quarter-mile. And so in this study, you'll see a circle circumference of the downtown, a quarter-mile radius that kind of shows some of the areas. We counted all the parking within that area. And that's where I sort of said, hey, we identified some areas, particularly residential streets that are just, nobody's using them. And so there's some availability options within there, there's some private parking within that five-minute walk that's available that where we can continue to reach out for shared lot agreements. And this is a common practice, you know, as I say, in cities who are trying to defray the cost of building an ultra-expensive parking deck downtown and bringing more traffic to their downtowns.
Right. And how long ago did the Seaport implement their parking shuttle?
The Seaport, Rachel, started probably mid this summer. And again, you know, they were hopeful that we were gonna be moving quicker but decided to go ahead and try it. And I think our hypothesis, and John Burke could speak more to this, is that they'll be more successful in drawing people to park there, which will be further out and obviously help with the traffic and hopefully congestion because they can park there all day, use the shuttle or walk, it's a very reasonable walk. There's the potential, it's not certain yet, but there is potential for a short water taxi. The Seaport is working really hard to try and make that a reality, which would obviously be, you know, I think more people would use that and park further out if they could use the water taxi. But yeah, they started in midsummer, it wasn't as well utilized as we would have liked, but again, there was no paid parking, so there wasn't really incentive to park there.
Right. Because the Seaport is like a half a mile, that parking lot into downtown Mystic, basically. I don't think it's a bar walk, I mean, we've done much farther, just walking in a parade from that area, so.
And it's a pretty walk if you walk down Bay Street and hug the water.
And there's also a shuttle that was associated with that also.
So me personally, I would rather see what the impact of the Seaport offering all this additional parking is going to have on downtown Mystic and maybe how it could be advertised a little bit better. I think the Baptist church on the Groton side already makes itself available for free parking for people in our community, so having an agreement with them will not add any additional parking to our side of Mystic. And something that I, I don't feel like as a town, because of such problems in downtown Mystic, that I think the town should be making money off of the parking situation. And also, I do, and I have discussed this and brought it up to some people, is we haven't thought of either Allen Street, which is a state road, and on both sides of that road is an enormous amount of land that the state has that could be parking as well. And there could also be kiosks up there with bikes that could be rented out for people to ride into downtown Mystic. And maybe that could, because when I look in our packet on page 14 of our packet, it has like a Greater Groton and it shows like the polling results and most of the people want to expand off-street public parking options. When it comes to meters, I mean, there's a drastic decline and people, you know, backing that. I also, when I go to page 15, I'm sorry, page 17, page 18, and you listen to the comments of people, what they're saying is church parking. And what I can understand from them would mean the Stonington side because there are some churches down that way that have an enormous amount of parking that probably is very underutilized because the Baptist church is already being used. So I'm not seeing anybody in these comments either yelling for meter parking. And as somebody who lives in Mystic as well, I personally am not a fan of the parking. I also am not a fan of seeing kiosks all over downtown Mystic saying, pay for your parking here.
Your time has expired.
I'd love to personally hear John Burke's response to that, but just to clarify, maybe one thing for the record, we did look at church parking and, as luck would have it, someone who's on the board of, the only church actually on our side that does have a parking lot, our other churches don't have parking, and St. Patrick's actually helped share their lot with the other churches who have no parking lots, but they're also undergoing a major renovation over the next few years, so it's not an option right now. So just to clarify, we did explore that.
And the Union Baptist Church in Groton has said that they will continue to allow people to park there as they have in the past, but at this point in time, they're not interested in entering into a shared lot agreement with the town. We have had a number of discussions with the folks at St. Mark's and those discussions are still ongoing about a shared lot agreement with them. So, you know, there are opportunities, and I think, you know, letting John Burke weigh in on this, there are opportunities to do other things, but having the revenue source from the parking meters to do these things is helpful. It's not necessarily the town making money off of it, it's the town taking money, managing parking, giving the incentive and getting the turnover on those on-street parking spots that then creates a revenue source so then we can help build and expand upon the infrastructure of many of the things that people are asking for. So, John, do you wanna weigh in on that?
Yeah, I think, I think the revenue's important because as John says, there are opportunities for shared lot agreements. Even in the Catholic church on the Stonington side, very large parking lot, there was certainly interest there with the pastor, as they're going through a construction, Paul and I, Sardar and I, met there and there's a construction project, so that, that might be a discussion pushed off a year. But there are other opportunities for shared lot within that five-minute walk zone and revenue does help from the meters. But the more important thing, I think, is the problem that you're currently facing in Mystic. You're very little on-street parking, quite frankly, as it compares to other seacoast communities from Connecticut up to Maine. And what is happening there is, in our council, one out of four parkers were parking in violation of the two-hour limit, one in seven were parking over four hours in the two-hour zone. What we see is a prevalence of shuffling of cars from employees. The pressure and the human nature aspect of this is when the private parking pricing all around, free parking is going up exponentially. And I think what we saw there is a parking lot there charging, I think, $5 or $5.50 a half hour. It's increasing the pressure on the free parking and pushing more and more long-term parkers into those very few customer spaces. From an economic development perspective, the larger issue that's facing communities is how do you get customers into the town? And you're not alone. I mean, every very, very popular, successful seacoast community like yourselves eventually faces this situation. It's a product of your own success and virtually all of them go to bit on-street parking. And part of that regulates the cost of the off-street. It kind of, it can help cap a little bit what people are charging off-street as, well, it's left unfettered, it can go quite high and you're seeing that, they're Mystic relative to your comparable communities just north. So I think that's, it is the revenue to make some of these shared lots work, but it's also the issue of getting people actually into these stores and restaurants, that kind of thing.
Thank you, Counsel Franco.
Thank you. If there was a potential to have parking up on Allen Street down both sides of the highway as pull-ins to have parking areas, majority of the tourists that came here would come here, that would be considered like their best parking option. Even if they drove downtown and didn't find a spot, they would turn around and go right back to that parking. It's sort of visible to your eye to know that that would be where you would park and that would probably be their best option to find a parking spot. Majority of the locals in town, I will say myself, I usually don't have a problem finding parking because I know where to look for my parking where other tourists wouldn't go, I would say. I would also have issues with some of the parking on some of the side roads. The roads are just so dang narrow. I don't even know if you park on both sides of the street, you can hardly, you shouldn't, it shouldn't even be two-way driving after that because you can only usually get one car in. It's, so to push out some of these people into the neighborhoods, I'm not, I don't think that's a wise option. But if you had a main parking area that was very visible for people to visually see this is where you would park, I think that would be the best. And if maybe the Seaport or Stonington could maybe advertise what's going on at the Seaport, that there would be more parking in that lot for visitors and they can walk in, they would probably go back and park there. Or if it's like, I don't know, some kind of technology with a big blue P on it when people come in to town and they have their directions on their GPS. That's what I think. I am just not a big fan of our small historic town having the meters and it's just such a small town. I mean, to have all these meters all over the place, I just, I don't think it would benefit our town as what you're trying to describe. And I would think, as I've even read in this packet, I can agree with some other people, that it would take away from the charm of our town to have parking meters and kiosks all over the place for parking. I understand what we are trying to accomplish, but I'm not sure so much this is going to do it. I just don't, and I think you're gonna actually hurt a lot of the locals and especially if you're gonna be charging $5.50, $6.00 for a half hour. I will tell you right now, I wouldn't, I would go to downtown even less knowing I would have to pay that.
We did not suggest charging $5.50 or $6.00 a half hour.
Yeah, $2.00 an hour.
Yeah. Right now, John Burke had mentioned that there is a private operator right now currently charging $5.50 an hour.
Half hour, I'll tell you.
Yeah, a half hour and doing quite well.
Yep.
And maybe John Burke could share, I mean, maybe it's in your packets, I don't have it in front of me, but how many feet the kiosk would be apart?
Yeah, I mean, they typically, they typically can manage eight to 12 spaces on streets, so you might see a handful of them on Main Street, you know, that a couple on one side, three on the other, that kind of thing. It's not every space, as I say there. And for streets that have angle parking, you know, they can handle many more spaces than eight to 12. So they're not really obtrusive, they have a very fine line now, they're no longer these large, you know, they're usually a two-foot by two-foot footprint, very small and streamlined and they would be handling multiple spaces, yeah.
And, you know, also just to jump in, I don't know anybody that really wants to pay to park, but here we are looking to start with the commercial districts, as John Burke had said, areas that are already regulated as two-hour parking. Those are the areas that we're looking to focus if we do parking meters on. I think if we start that program, that then starts giving an incentive for people to not continuously drive around in circles, creating more traffic and hoping for that free spot right in that best area. And as much as the Seaport may advertise, unless there's an incentive for someone to go half a mile or so away, then they will either have to walk a little bit more or take a shuttle if it's free or if they get all-day parking for $10, that's going to not get utilized at the same level unless there's charged parking at a higher rate in downtown Mystic. So, you know, there's that incentive-based program. The last comment that I wanna make, maybe be the skunk in the room a little bit, but a number of years back, I think it was probably six or so years back, Connecticut DOT proposed doing some signage changes along Route 95. And one of those signage changes was to advertise at exit 89 on Allen Street that that was a way to get to Mystic. This room was standing room only, there were people out in the hallway objecting to directing any traffic from 95 through Allen Street into Mystic. It was something we thought is simple as a sign change, we didn't think it was that big of a deal, but the resident in that area, there was an old agreement, I think from the late 70s or early 80s when DOT was first working on building that, that off-ramp and or, and then it was kind of re-supported by a council and I think, again, it could be 2015, 2016 of when that happened again. So although I think on-street parking along Allen Street could work, I think you'd have a room full of very, very angry people. So, you know, when you're talking about community feedback and public outreach, that's one I could very clearly predict where that one would go.
Well, I didn't suggest putting a sign on the highway to say this way to Mystic. What I am suggesting is that if we had parking up there, there are numerous people that know to just get off that exit whether there's a sign or not and go to Mystic. I mean, and also if you're in town and you're looking for parking and there's a sign that says parking and it has an arrow going up that way, you could find parking up there.
Your time has expired.
It's also a half a mile away.
Thank you.
A couple things. One, I've had a lot of calls about GPS routing people through neighborhoods along Allen into downtown. We'll get the same backlash. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, you know, in favor, but we will have that. One thing I'm always concerned about is the, I'm on the traffic authority, me and Chief Sardar, the two of us, we get a lot of complaints from the neighborhoods. Of course, number one, they would love to have only residential parking, you know, resident parking, no outer people, but on top of that, they don't like the high-turnover parking, that he's seen people constantly come over there. So if you could direct the constant turnover to the main downtown and have longer-term employees out there, that does make the residents more happy out there.
May I comment?
Yeah.
Paul Sardar? That's, that's the key, and we discussed this for two years in this committee, as a downtown resident of 38 years, raised four kids, a block from Main Street, two blocks from the river from Mystic River Park, it's really come down to the town of Groton, you guys pretty much drop-kicked your, your parking regulations with development in downtown Mystic and it's created a tremendous suction of people, which is good or it's bad. I mean, as a resident for downtown, I've been there for 37 years, the only good thing that's happened that's improved my quality of life was when we did the park. After that, it's a dot, bob and weave and it's a, it's a getting, learning how to live with it. And Counsel Franco, I agree with her that any of these things take away from, from the charm, maybe we wanna be careful not to take away the Mystic out of Mystic. But where we're at right now with all these restaurants and little boutique hotels and businesses, it's about the employee parking. And it's been commented that that is the real elephant in the room. If employees can park someplace for four hours, six hours a shift, we at times, we, neighbors and I looked at Willow Street on our side between Washington Street and Main and that was pretty much, there was about 10 parking spaces there that was pretty much commandeered by a local businesses and as the shifts changed, they would come in and change out. So that way, if, so if, there has to be, see, I believe, as a resident who lives downtown, and I don't know if anybody else has lived there this long, almost 40, excuse me, almost 40 years, there has to be, if not, and I understand how things have to go in steps and that's the way we're looking at it in Stonington, that's how we've talked about it, is you take one step, you see how that reacts, how everything reacts in that way and then maybe you look to the next step. But I really think, as, as a resident, you talk to some of my friends over in Groton, on the Groton side, they're gonna wanna know, when you start metering and those, those employees start moving out and people start moving out, is there gonna be room for me to park my car? We've got a couple of streets right in downtown Mystic have that same issue that don't have park, don't have driveways. Is there gonna be a resident parking element to this that is gonna protect it, at least have it ready to go? That is, that would be not my first gripe if I didn't have parking. I'm fortunate, I have a nice driveway, I could stuff 10 cars on my property if I need to. So this is not about me, it's about my, my neighbors and my friends who live downtown. So that's, that's it. If we can... If we can, you meter those few commercial areas, stop and stop resident, you may have to, we may have to look at, uh, resident parking also on some of the outskirts streets that aren't paid parking, but are just resident parking, to push those employees maybe for the five to seven-minute walk rather than the two-minute walk. Maybe that's gotta be looked into, but, um, I, I won't, I won't, uh, be any more redundant, but that's, that's where the downtown residents are and your, your, uh, town manager, and I know your chief are right on target, some of your counselors are right on target. You're here, you see it.
I have a point of information.
Hold on, we have, we have Counselor Parker.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. So, the resident parking, who would be in charge of it?
So just to clarify, I think one of the things we talked about at the beginning was phases. So, um, as I think, um, Rachel pointed out, you know, the Seap- the Seaport did try, and as John pointed out, quite honestly, it, it didn't work. We, we did do that, we marketed, we had huge signs, Public Works partnered with them. We, we tried this all summer, and there was a shuttle and everything, and it didn't work because there's free parking in downtown Mystic. Um, so in phases, what we're thinking about, and we, again, would love to partner with, with your side of the river, to start small, start with this commercial district, get some kiosks, caseful, that blend in, not too many, and see, see how it works. You know, do this in partnership with our traffic authorities, with our residents, with our businesses, and see how it goes. But right now, you know, we're not talking yet about resident, um, parking permits, it's just something that we know it might need to be visited at some point, and we're gonna be looking at that and tracking it.
But on the same token, it's gonna have to be done at the same time, because you start putting parking meters out, they're gonna move into the residential areas. So if the people who have residential parking stickers, you call the police, hey, someone's parked on my street that does not have a sticker. So you got it both ways. So if you don't do one and the other backs up, we're gonna have a problem downtown for people.
John Burke actually had, I think, some good points on that, because that was a big concern on our side, and maybe John Burke could speak to that, why it doesn't necessarily happen like that.
Yeah, we, we don't typically want to presuppose where folks are gonna go. We have very good counts on those residential streets of what's parking there now. We understand that. And there's a difference in some of the streets, as Paul talked about, he's got a driveway, you can get 10 people. There's difference between streets where people have a ton of parking and some, some streets that, where some houses maybe have no parking and they rely on the street. There's some cross streets over in Stonington that you can think about, where people have to park on those streets. Those are very good candidates for resident permit parking, right? Even now, forget about, after the meters. So that's something to consider, but what we talk about doing is, you know, uh, providing areas for these employees who are parking in customer spaces, perhaps we can all agree we don't want to have employees in those two-hour customer spaces. And, and so providing them an alternative place to go, Union Baptist Church with very, very convenient parking potentially at St. Mark's, the Fourth Voting Hall lot, very, very convenient locations, and some of the streets that we've listed with over 100 available spaces, even now in your peak hour, that are empty, that don't have those situations with, uh, no driveways, and the streets aren't being used by residents, let's use them. So the first thing is, if you meter, let's get those employees who are using those two-hour spaces, we're chasing around and moving them into those, these spaces that are available now. Uh, now, we go back after that's implemented, if you do find some of those few residential streets that are taking some of that parking, then you have the means, the toolbox, ready to go with a resident parking ordinance. And that's something that's done in, in more than half of the communities I work for, I would, I would estimate, that we have that on the book. So that's something to be at the ready, and we would be at the ready with that. But I don't think, the problem is sometimes the communities will just start blanking across the board, uh, doing resident permit parking, and what ends up happening is streets don't get utilized at all, these are public assets. And if you, in some, some situations, there's plenty of, uh, off-street driveways, uh, you'll end up with nobody on those streets, and now you've got a worse problem. So we really, that's sort of the incremental that Danielle's talking about. You want to, to do things in a logical way, but be ready, uh, to see unintended, um, consequences. And, uh, but I think the plan envisions that.
I know we talked about this a long time ago. We talked about people leaving work and going to parking at night, if it's a late night, and what the turnout would be if they're walking by themselves, a female walking by herself, or a male walking by themselves, and something happens, because they're parking down the streets, they don't have a buddy system. So who's gonna be, God forbid something happens. They're parked five minutes, 10 minutes away, or walking and something happens. What we're trying to avoid is not having a liability anywhere. So either we can figure out how to get them, as Counselor Bordeland or several have said, a shuttle. If we're gonna find them specific parking, are we wanting the businesses to say, hey, if you guys can figure out a place for you guys to park your employees, would you be willing, I don't know if this has been done, to have them park there? Even at Mystic Seaport, but what times the shuttles shut off? So we gotta look at all these aspects and talk to the businesses at the same time. Ask your employees not to park in the two-hour spaces, because then you're losing business So it's, I think there's, we need more input from everybody. And I agree that everybody needs to be on the same page and have it together, because half the businesses are in Groton, most of the businesses are in Groton, and it's affecting Stonington. So it's vice versa, if we're not doing this at the same time, something could be said at a Groton thing and the Stonington side doesn't know. So I think we need more input. Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to kind of go off of what, um, Mr. Burke said about, there are some streets currently now that have large empty spaces that people aren't using. Is there any educational effort going on right now to talk to the different employers that are here and start to kind of get people already moving to some of those spaces? I mean, we could start that immediately with an education program to downtown businesses and say, you know, here's a whole bunch of spaces that are available, they just may not know about them. So just wondering, is there any education going on, whether it's a flyer, show them where those spots are or streets or?
We, we haven't done a whole lot of that yet, but also, you know, it, it goes back to why are those streets not being utilized? Because there's free parking closer to downtown. So that's what this, this whole thing just keeps coming around to. If there's free on-street parking right on Main Street, East or West Main Street, you know, and the side streets right off of that, why am I gonna drive a few minutes further away and have to walk that much longer, et cetera? So it, you know, in this instance, you know, we often, a lot of these decisions is chicken and egg. The first step is if we take our existing two-hour, already regulated parking, which the system is being very much abused, and regulate that with parking meters. If residents are parking in that two-hour meter zone today, well, they're violating the law if they're staying there for longer than two hours. So that's, I, I think an easy way to start is with that. Otherwise, um, I, I think we're just trying some of the same strategies that we've already done with, that haven't been really super successful. Without an incentive, um, I, I don't think we're gonna accomplish a lot.
The other solution is, is put police officers down there and start writing a hell of a lot of tickets.
That's another idea, well, that's another option.
That's, that's, that's the option, that's the option.
You can do that, you can do the paid parking, or you can build, build a parking garage, those are our three options. If you don't have one of those, we're just gonna leave it, or there's nothing to do.
The real energy to put, parking meters, is really to drive employees to be further out so that customers for the stores can get in, is that the real, sort of the nut of it?
Even, even be more efficient in stores and stuff, too. It's all, you know, you think about your meter.
Yeah, because it's not just employees, it's also visitors. Oh, well, I got a, I got a spot right on Main Street, I'm gonna stay there all day, awesome. Not if you're paying $2 an hour, that's gonna give you an incentive maybe to move over, and then that helps the businesses more, because then there's more traffic turning over right in front of their stores. You know, some of the, uh, people that, you know, are violating this stuff might be business owners already. It would be great if I could just have a parking spot right in front of my store, why wouldn't I take that all day?
I know we have to probably move on, but I think maybe just to summarize on the, the Stonington side, um, you know, I completely empathize with, with all of you, you know, no solution is ever going to be perfect, and there's always gonna be unintended consequences, and there will always be, you know, potential negative impacts, but even inaction is action. And I'm afraid that's what we've been doing for a very long time, you know, long before probably any of us got here, but we've hit this point. And I think it's time we make a decision. I think we're hurting our small businesses, quite honestly. I think we're hurting our environment, the traffic flow, the constant circling that John pointed to, you know, is a reason other communities, many other historic communities in New England have moved to this model. And I also think we want to remove some of the congestion and get people to park and stay and park further out, whether that's on either side of the river, human nature, we're never gonna do that with free parking downtown. People will keep circling and hope somebody's gonna pull out and they get that free spot, even if it is only a few dollars, you know, it changes behavior. Um, and we see that all the time, whether we're looking at, you know, Stonington with our yellow bag program and people having to pay just a few dollars, but our recycling rate is half that of the rest of the state. So, you know, money changes the way people think about things. So, again, you know, we want to do this in partnership with you, I think it'll be better for residents or visitors or businesses if we do this together. If you guys aren't ready, you know, we understand, there'll be no hard feelings, but we are gonna move forward on our side. So I just want to be clear about that.
I mean, I'll just give my personal view, I'm personally in favor of parking meters, I don't have any problem with it. Every community I've ever lived in has parking meters, this is the only one that basically doesn't. No one ever complains about it, ever thinks about it, it's just part of the fabric of every community, every city, every street, there's parking meters. You know, you go anywhere, you don't even think about it, it's just, okay, I just, but where do I put it? That's usually what you're looking for, is where do I put my credit card into the kiosk? So I think it opens us up for, you know, give us money to go do a lot of other things and, and, you know, I don't, I, I think the feed, the blowback from people is, you know, once they're used to it, they don't even think there was another way. So, I mean, just, that's just my personal view, that I, I've never lived anywhere that didn't have a parking meter, so, in their downtown area. So I don't know, I don't know what the big deal is.
Counselor Bordeland had commented about wanting shuttles and shuttles, and, and Counselor Parker about safety, and it's quite possible that this could, could generate funds that may be able to do that, because otherwise, you've gotta go to businesses, you gotta go on the Stonington side, we've gotta go to all the hotels and get those hotels to pay for that. And if they, and they just don't have to, and the restaurants just don't have to, and they're not going to. So if, if this council is interested in, I don't know, uh, uh, providing some type of community service, that's maybe the way you gotta, you're gonna have to do it. That, that's the money. Because I know, as a resident, I've already told our selectmen and our board of finance, I don't want to spend one tax dollar on this, not a single tax dollar on this. It's not worth it to me to do that, and we're not going to, in the end.
And I think also people that come here, who are coming from communities all over the East Coast, they're, they don't know that there isn't free parking, they just think you're gonna pay for the parking. So I think that's just, that's my view on it, that's, I think it's, it's time we move forward on it and get it going, so.
I just had a point of information.
What's your question?
Um, it's, it was stated that, you know, the gentleman in the middle there, I forget your name, I called it.
Paul.
Paul Sardar. Um, you know, it's part of a, a committee, and it sounds like it was pretty robust and ahead of time, ahead of schedule compared to our side. My question is, um, to the, the, the staff that are involved, have we had a committee of constituents from the Groton side?
Yes. No, we have, we have a joint committee that's made up of people from both Groton and Stonington.
Okay, perfect, good. Uh, and the other thing is, uh, in regards to the shuttle, my question, it kind of got, spoke by Counselor Parker, my question was going to be of inquiry was, um, maybe we should be, maybe, have you looked into a shuttle for the employees versus shuttling, you know, shuttling the, uh, you know, shuttling employees to the, the Seaport? And so that's my question. And my other question was, uh, of information was, um, I've seen it where some people will do, make the employees, the employer when they're hired, they give them a tag, and so it's an employee vehicle, and they stick it in when they no longer work, that they pull it off, but they can be shuttled to a parking lot. And then that shuttle driver is watching people getting in and out of cars, just a thought.
I, I think it's, it's, all these things, we all have great ideas, it's a matter of somebody actually doing them, and it's a matter of, of setting up the dominoes and doing one, and then doing the next, and doing the next. And I think what the committee has come up with, and again, I, I don't want any of this. I don't want any of it, I want Mystic to go back the way it was 25 years ago, but that's not happening. So, uh, you gotta motivate, uh, employees to go someplace else, you gotta motivate employers to help, to help facilitate that to happen, to help convince their employees to go someplace else. The bigger employee, employers have to pitch in, there has to be some communication there. And I, the way this committee is looking at it, what we've been doing for two years and looking at it, and our consultants has done a fantastic job with bringing information in from other communities up, up and down, uh, the New England coast, is that this little step of Main Street, East and West, water, homes, crotto. Those can get the ball rolling, we see it, I, I don't want to see meters on Jackson Avenue, okay, on my street, I'm two blocks away, by the way, three years ago, before COVID, two weekends a year, there was cars all around my street. Now it's every single weekend, 10 different states, 15 different states covered Jackson Avenue and Washington for those two blocks. However, as John Burke said, you go across Route 1 to the, behind, uh, CBS on Lincoln, and there's nobody there. So there is space out there, and it's not that far.
It's within a five-minute walk, that's within a five, yeah, parts of it.
By the way, people, I, I, where I live, it's now a jet, that Washington Street is now a residential thoroughfare, okay? And I, I tell our Public Works Department, don't fix the road, I, I want to hear the cars hit the, hit the, the potholes.
He does.
So the people slow down, uh, because people are walking there, but people walk by, and I've asked, they're coming from the end of Mystic, okay, which is out, you know, almost, basically Sea Swirl, you guys know where Sea Swirl is? Or they're coming from the marinas, that's where they're walking from, walking past our house all day long. So they're walking further, they're walking 15 minutes, sometimes further, right now, where they find a place to live and then they walk down that, you know, talking about.
Counselor Franco, I see your hand, is that a quick question?
Yeah, it's just a quick question, follow-up on something.
Sure.
So what I heard them talk about was they want people to come into our community, because basically downtown Mystic is people day-trip, weekends, it's, it's one of those get away for a day kind of place. But you're saying you want them to park for two hours and then leave. And that's what, it's sort of confusing, because basically Mystic is that come and spend the day in Mystic is what you want people to do. So it's sort of confusing where you're, on the other hand, saying, no, we only want you to park here for two hours and then leave.
Counselor Franco, what's the question?
Again, maybe just to clarify for Rachel, it's hopefully come park at the Seaport all day, you know, and stay there and walk around, or if you are coming just for dinner, to enjoy a dinner, or something, it's three, I think we'd all agreed on three hours, so they are two, we are referring to the two-hour existing commercial spaces, but they would be three hours so people could enjoy a bit more time in the downtown, but still have that turnover. But again, incentivizing people to park further out and not be in those high, very desirable, quick turnover for people who want to go in to frequent, you know, one of your many wonderful restaurants, or you'll go into a quick, you know, do a few quick shopping trips, you know, those spots are for them. But if you want to spend a day, you know, park further out and walk and enjoy the whole day.
All right, it was just confusing, because if you're not staying in a hotel, you have to park all day somewhere, and I get it should be the Seaport or maybe somewhere else, but that's where I think the work needs to be done. I don't think meters are gonna make people go park somewhere else, and I don't think pushing them into neighborhoods, um, is gonna make any of the neighbors any more happier. So I think, as the packet states, I think there should be other parking, and even Allen Street could be for, and please...
Counselor Franco, do you have a question? Thank you. Counselor Parker?
So just to confirm, you only wanted downtown Mystic, the Main Street? And how many are we gonna put out, potentially?
John, how many meters were we proposing in the?
Just on the Groton side.
Just on the Groton side? Was it around 60?
Uh, let's see, kiosks, uh, there's kiosks we're talking about, not meters.
Yes, yeah, so metered spaces, space is not 60 kiosks, sorry.
Yeah, I, I want to say like nine.
Because it's 87 meter spaces, right?
So, yeah, you're saying 87? So, yeah, you're saying 87 metered spaces in Groton, 66 in Stonington. So that would equate to, um, so that's the number of metered spaces.
Yeah, it, I'd have to go back and, and, and pull out the, but it, it might be, it might be like nine in Groton. Nine kiosks on Water and, and Main and Pearl. I think it was like nine. And, uh, uh, there's a little bit on gravel as well, just a few spaces down gravel. So that's what's sticking out to me. I can get you that number, but I believe that's, uh, it was like 11 and nine. Maybe a total of 20 between the two communities, something like that. It's not a whole lot. And, and you're fortunate because of Cottrell Street has the, has the angle. You don't really need many on that street for, for, for a bulk of the parking spaces, but.
So right in front of the stores, like, it's coming from the top of the hill? Or going down, I should say, route one, from somewhere between there by Mystic Pizza going up? Or are we going to do the side streets to the businesses on the side?
So again, uh, West Main to East Main, uh, a portion of Bank and Water. And then, you know, Holmes and Cottrell. So not, not going all the way down, not going down High Street, you know?
Yeah, coming down, coming down Main Street, there might be three or four on either side to the bridge from Bank Street down. You know, might be three or four. Um, you have Water Street and, um, just, there's just a few spaces going down gravel. And then as we talked about, um, Earl down to the paid lot, which would be St. Mark's if that comes through, that would be the, the gist of it on the Groton side.
So my, shouldn't say question, but it is a question. Um, the kiosk would be, they would have to plug in? Because I know there's some places that you plug in your driver's license, uh, license plate, pay the fee via app or something, and then go forth? Is that what we're thinking of?
Yeah, they're solar, they're solar powered, uh, solar. Uh, the solar's gotten much better on the, so there's no utility connection typically. And, um, they would typically accept credit cards. Would also have a pay-by-phone app, so you don't have to use the kiosks at all. Um, and in some of the cities, uh, some of my clients are, are getting, you know, 70, 80, 90% of their payments and over 90% of credit card. And, and much of those are by the pay-by-phone app. You simply register once, put your license plate in, your credit card in. Once every time you park, you just, you just say where you're parked and start your parking session. You never go to the kiosks. And that's, uh, that's sort of the future, and that's what's, uh, growing in the market, so. But yeah, they're solar powered, standalone units, small.
So our potential costs, which is, it is budgeted. And you, we're asking for budgeted amount, correct? For both sides, you're doing a budget? So you're, it is going to be tax dollars the first year?
With the kind of assurance from John, from all the communities who worked in that it would be paid back within the first year. So that was Paul's point.
But it's not really, well, it's just going to go into a general fund. So it's not really, so we're paying first and potentially hope that we're going to get the money back the second year.
This is one of the few times where our government actually invests in something, yes. And we get a return, right?
Uh, you know, all of John's calculations, looking at this, comparing it to other communities, we would get the return on investment the first year. And we would actually have, be net positive after the first year. The meters would be paid off. And we would look to create some type of a special fund, enterprise fund, whatever you want to call it, that the funding then goes into that. So then, all right, we want to identify sidewalk improvement, crosswalks, striping.
And include maintenance fees? Because the solar panels will have to be changed out if they start to wear out and stuff. And we're uploading into a cloud base, so it's web-based, correct, or?
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah.
So there's maintenance fees going on, so we would have to make sure we put money aside. And those go up each year, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
But I just want to be clear that, yes, we're, we're asking to put it in, uh, into our taxes or our budget to discuss for the next season, for not July 1st, right? Or have you put it in already?
So I've put it in as a CIP item. Uh, you know, we haven't given the CIP to, to the town manager yet. But, um, the council, if you want to move forward with it, you can, when we get the CIP. If there's other things you want to do through other funding sources, if you want to move forward on it sooner. So it's not, we missed this summer. We can certainly look at other options.
Just to confirm that we will be okay after the next year. So what happens if we don't get it? If this does not pay off? Do we look at, we got to look at this catch 22? So we pay it out, and then the potential is people stop coming because they're paying, so.
That would break the model for every other community like us.
Yeah, I've, I've done these projections for many, many communities. And, and the CIP, your, your demand is higher than almost all of them.
Groton, you mean?
Mystic is, because of the, because of the, as I mentioned earlier, the few, so few on-street spaces. And the fact that you don't have any public off-street spaces, I mean, they're privately managed. Uh, the demand here is, is, is inordinate. And I'd say it's, it's quite, quite exceptional. Um, so, but what we find in your peer cities going up the coast is that, uh, you know, turning over in a year in terms of paying off the equipment, fees, all of the rest is pretty typical. And in some places, we're paying off in the summer. Um, so I'd be less concerned about that. But there are communities I have that aren't on the coast who have maybe lower demand than you guys. And sometimes for them, they're like, you know, let's prove it. Let's put in a couple of, a stations in a couple lots and see what happens. And they quickly adopt, uh, the other spaces because, uh, they do quite well. So I, I don't, I think also based on the use of some of your private lots that are at $5 plus a half hour, um, you know, that kind of gives you some, that should give you a little bit of comfort on the, on the fact that these will.
The rate we're proposing is half what the private lots are charging right now.
And filling.
And filling, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I still think we need to just, I still think we need to come together, let the public know. And then have meetings soon, two meetings if possible, soon. Then come back to us. I think that would be better. I, I'm not saying no. I just want everyone, businesses, everybody included, to hear what's going on. Granted, you guys have had meetings, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, and again, just to, you kind of sing your town staff's praises. I mean, it has been two years, 22 people coming together, representing the two sides, downtown Mystic merchants, Mystic chamber, residents from both sides, you know, town officials from both sides. And so while you, I do agree, a bigger community dialogue is needed. I think, you know, a lot of our experience, we have these huge, you know, publicize them. And we are lucky if we get 30 people, sometimes 50. So it's still not, like, it's completely representative. I still 100% think we have to do it, and that is our plan. But just so you know, we have posted all these meetings, they're on your town website. You can watch the Youtubes of some of them. Um, so I do think it's been a very transparent process for people who wanted to engage. I know everyone's busy, so they don't always get to it. And we definitely need this next meeting. But just to say, the last two years, there has been a lot of transparent work around this topic. And we have engaged, you know, residents, businesses, and other, I think, you know, key stakeholders in this conversation.
All right, I, I got to apologize, I have to go. I want to thank you very much. I've never gotten an opportunity to talk in front of the Groton Town Council, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. All right. Yes, that's. Councilor Baumgartner?
Be, for purposes of brevity, I'll, I'll be very brief. But, um, next steps, um, I, I think this was unequivocally the best conversation as a council we've had on this topic. I think we've made some movement, but it still seems unclear as to what will be required of us to make a decision as far as rowing, should we opt to row in the same direction on Stonington? Uh, what we will need to do and what that timeline looks like. So perhaps a question for Manager Burke?
Well, if the council's interested in having the, uh, two joint meetings, I say let's get the, you know, the CIP's already been submitted. Let's get those meetings going, um, quickly, so we get some input, feedback, and then see where that turns up at.
Excellent. And I, I, you know, Paul left, but I agreed, no dollars, uh, tax dollars ought to be expended. Um, you know, and so supporting CIP, but ensuring that there's a self-generating fund. Uh, just as far as the, the special fund, uh, would that be, have to be codified in our ordinances as well?
Uh, I, I want to talk to the finance director on, I think if we're creating any special funds.
No, the special fund itself doesn't have to be, no.
Okay.
When we did the resilience meetings downtown Mystic, did people come from both sides?
They did.
Okay, I'm wondering if one meeting in the little downtown might be enough. We had, I think, really big turnout, didn't we?
We had about, uh, almost 50 people attended.
Which is really big turnout.
Which is really big turnout.
Really big turnout. Um, I, my professional opinion is if we have two meetings, we're going to have, um, it, it's not going to get the, um, I think the, the conversation moving as well. I think each meeting will be not very well attended. Whereas I think if we have one meeting, it'll create less confusion. I think we'll, we can have it, you know, either side of the bridge. And I, I think, you know, the folks impacted the most in downtown Mystic will have the opportunity to get there. Um, I would encourage, if we do that, for all council members to try to attend that meeting. Because we hear these comments, we hear these suggestions. But, uh, you know, you, I want you to hear it too. Because a meeting like that, where, close to where people live, is going to be a lot easier than people showing up here on a Tuesday night to present at a public hearing or something like that.
Since Stonington's further along, uh, if there's no direction, I'd rather have it on our side, just, yeah.
We're happy across the river.
And I, I agree with, uh, uh, Councilor Parker. I think we have to be very intentional, ensuring that any form of maintenance fees or the upkeep has to be built into that cost. And that way, you know, a year, two years later, we're not, you know, the taxpayers are not footing that bill. Um, but, uh, just going through that running list, that we got a lot of great feedback from the public through the Explore Groton, um, portal. And, um, a lot of folks, um, you know, opining on utilizing the water taxi, as you shared. And, um, also, um, the opposition, which I would wholeheartedly agree with, that, you know, there really is not a place in, in Mystic for a parking garage, a structured parking garage. Um, and so I'm glad that that is not a part of this, uh, this proposal. Um, and then just as far as, um, the, uh, the neighborhood concerns, you know, Councilor Bordelund brought that up as well. Um, you know, and, um, and Paul just really identifying a very clear and concrete plan as far as, you know, there are the residential parking needs and then the employee parking plan. But I, I would agree, I, I think this is a step we have to take, most communities do this. In most cases, the, the addition of traffic in our town is attributed to people actually looking for parking as well. Um, and we didn't, uh, really get to that, but there, I mean, so many people just driving round and round. Um, and so hopefully, you know, this plan can help, um, kind of stem that and actually get people onto our streets, shopping at our restaurants and enjoying our, our great community. So thank you again, and look forward to supporting us.
Just one more quick thought is, how many of us know people say they don't go to downtown Mystic in the prime season? If I knew there was meter parking, I could write, I would definitely do more errands down there myself.
I just have another point of information, real quick.
Just, just one second. Um, I have, uh, just one quick point. Um, so you said, I think you said 87, uh, spaces?
As, as of right now, that would probably be somewhere in the maximum. And again, this is just, we're still talking conceptual. So, you know, anything we do with this, we're just trying to figure out, do you want to move forward? Because up until tonight, I have gotten no real clear direction. Not that tonight anybody said, yes, we want a meter parking. It's, let's get some more public input. So the first current draft shows 87 spaces in Groton and 66 in Stonington. Metered spaces.
Right, so, um, the thing I was going to ask was, um, those aren't going to have the lines, right? Because we were told previously that if you put the lines out, you have less spaces. So it's just going to be like, it's not going to be lined out. This is one spot, this is spot one, two, three, four.
Well, a lot of those spots are already lined.
Right, but will that be like removed so we can have more spaces? Because, because I've gone to metered parking before where it's just like, you, you buy the ticket, you put it on your thing, but it's not like this is your spot. If you can find a spot, then you have a spot. It's not like, I'm spot seven.
Excellent point. And, uh, yeah, I mean, ultimately, a lot of communities, when they first install, they leave the lines of, of the stalls, and then they let them fade away. And in year two, you know, they go to, uh, just lining out the no parking zones, which would be the opposite of parking, of lining the stalls. Would be putting no parking zones to crosswalks in front of hydrants, much less striping than parking stalls. And to your point, instead of 87 spaces, you may end up with, uh, 97 spaces because you typically achieve a 10% or so increase in the amount of on-street space by doing that. So it's a good point.
Okay, and just one quick thing. I, I do think it's important that we have, uh, like, one collective conversation. Um, I do think that conversation most likely or most optimally would be done near downtown Mystic. I just think the most people, most affected will have the best access to it. Um, the reason I think we have to do it together is just because really, it's very important that Groton and Stonington roll in the same direction on this. Specifically, um, if, for instance, Stonington puts in meter parking and Groton doesn't, I assure you that everyone's just going to come to the Groton side and, and make our problem much worse. So I think this, the solution has to be, um, uh, basically decided together as in locks, as much as, as possible. I mean, we are two different municipalities, but if we can find a solution that works for everybody, I think that would, that would, um, that would work the best for everybody. That's how I feel personally. Um, so everybody has.
I just had a point of information.
What's a quick question?
Uh, for the town manager, is this also going to be, I think sometimes, uh, things are put on like the town website and the channel, you know, where it comes on the thing, um, social media, obviously. But I also think it should also go in the paper. Um, because there are some of the older folks who live in the downtown area that, um, you know, will only see this. So I just hope that we put this in the newspaper about this joint meeting.
We certainly can.
And that would be really helpful.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to have to move on. Thank you for being here, you're on the next agenda item, so.
We're even a press release as well. Uh, John, is it possible to do a press release with the paper?
Yeah.
To say that you, the two of you are looking for feedback and there's going to be a meeting? It might be a, a bigger presentation and we'd get more front-page notifications on it.
Thank you.
What a press release always ends up being is just an article, so. So, yes, we'll, we'll try to get an article.
That'd be great.
And items like this, we actually always call the reporters.
Yeah, they're always eager for these type of things.
Perfect, that'd be great to do, a press release.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, John, thank you, thank you.
All right.
I can be super brief. I know you have a lot more to get to.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go, move on to the Stonington first selectwoman update. Welcome.
Yeah, no, welcome. I'll be super brief. I really just wanted to come, you know, it was nice last year, um, getting to come and, and talk and just kind of connect, obviously it was over Zoom, a little different. Um, and also just to say, you know, I'm always here and happy to talk, you know, offline with any individual members, anytime. Our board of segment, as you can see, our, our board of finance chair, I had to leave our board of police commission chair, is still here. Um, you know, we're really available offline, because, you know, obviously you can only fit so much into a meeting. And the discussion isn't always as, um, you know, it's not really discussion as much. But one thing just to say, and I was glad you guys brought it up, was that amazing, um, resiliency workshop that you held on November 1st. Um, really just to say a thank you, um, we're so excited about the new staff member, Megan Granato. Um, and she's actually agreed to come next week to one of our new board, um, commissions, uh, the Flood, Climate, Erosion and Stormwater Board, it's the longest title ever. Um, but she's agreed to come and kind of talk. And that was kind of one of the goals, again, not to get into tonight, but maybe offline. If, I don't know if you guys have people who, um, focus on different areas, but we are looking on the Stonington side, what more can we do on resiliency? And obviously sharing the river and the downtown. You know, um, I think you guys are maybe a bit ahead of us on some of this. So if there's things that, you know, you want to partner with or want to tap into us, you want to partner with or want to tap into us, we've partnered with the Seaport on a few things. We've been looking at kind of holding some more kind of discussions, but also as we are approaching our budget season, if there's more that, you know, you think we should be doing on our side to look into this or partner with plans you may have going forward, please don't hesitate to reach out, because obviously this is a huge issue, and we'd really like to do more together. But we're excited about Megan joining that meeting and seeing how that board might be able to support some further work. So again, happy to talk offline. I also just wanted to say, it was kind of happenstance that it happened, it was an accident, but it was so nice, and your mayor came and your town manager and a few others, but we had a veteran who turned a hundred, who, again, relatives kind of thought he lived in Stonington, but it was Groton side, but we ended up doing sort of a joint celebration during the Mystic River Bridge, and it was such a wonderful kind of moment for the two communities. So we were just thinking, if you see any more of those types of, you know, positive community moments, and the same on our side, we'll be looking, were things where we could join together? Or, this wasn't as positive, but it was wonderful to have him. Andre came to one of our short-term rental meetings recently, and again, it was just great having some representation. Obviously, we're two different municipalities, but we, you know, we impact each other with our decisions, and we can learn from each other, and your town manager was wonderful helping me kind of behind the scenes prepare for some of those meetings as well. So, I just think, you know, we just want to offer to our staff can be helpful, if I can be helpful, we're here, we face a lot of the same issues. And just to let you know, on the short-term rentals, we are having our hopefully final community conversation next week. I quite honestly have no idea where our draft ordinance will end up. And then, again, that February, that same February meeting I referenced earlier would be a town meeting vote, but I'd encourage you, you know, all our residents, we have a lot of your residents putting input on our kind of ordinance, because they might own properties on our side of the river, so if you have any input or feedback for us on the short-term rentals, we're really welcome to hear it. And then, just the last thing on the Old Mystic Bridge, because I know this has been a point of kind of questions in the past, and happy for John to jump in with anything else, but just, we talked about this at the last meeting, so I just wanted to update you. We are entering now into the Phase Two of our bridge asset management program, and so, again, just as a recap, we do an inventory of all of our local bridges. Two years ago, we didn't even know how many we had, we have seventeen, in case you were interested. And we're really just working now to evaluate the needs, so we're looking at structural adequacy ratings, sufficiency ratings, and kind of the level of importance in terms of a lot of different factors. And so this data is going to be helping us inform kind of where near-term and future investments are needed, and where hopefully we can do repairs versus full replacement, because obviously it's a lot more costly. So this is, we're just entering into kind of that Phase Two, we're still working through it, and just, again, for transparency's sake, to say, you know, we're finalizing our sit, but right now, we have a South Anguilla Road Bridge that we're finishing, and then potentially new work pending the board of finances' view on it, with White Rock Bridge, which just actually happens to be a bridge we share with Westerly, that Rhode Island version of DOT rated as failing. So that one became a higher priority, kind of out of the blue a little bit. So, and again, just to recap, you know, we were really proud of the joint work that Groton took the lead on with addressing one of the main concerns from the Old Mystic Fire Chief, which was the hydrant, lack of hydrant on the Groton side, and putting together, I think, a pretty innovative way to address that concern. We know the turn radius is still a concern, and something that, you know, we're in conversation about, but it's just, again, in terms of at least where we stand now with our bridge rating, and the priorities of which bridges we need to focus on first, that one hasn't been rated as high. But I don't know if John wants to add anything.
And I think I've updated you, knowing that Stonington wasn't likely to be able to fund this year, I have reached out to our legislators to try to go through the, you know, there's a lot of money out there right now to try to, the typical bridge program pays for fifty percent, if you remember, of the cost, if you remember, we had six hundred thousand assigned to us for that, now the cost is up to one point eight million. So we would anticipate they would give us, as at fifty percent, nine hundred thousand total. However, we're going to try for the bond commission for the full amount, because we've seen them fund a lot of things lately. So I've sent the numbers to the legislators, and they said they would try to pursue that.
All right, Council Board along?
Thank you. I just want to thank you so much for coming and speaking about this. I know it was something a couple terms ago that we were talking, and it was great, and we brought up the idea of like, kind of jointly talking together. As a person who grew up in the Mystic side and used to rollerblade all the way down through Mystic, down River Road, and then across that bridge, it does have a great linkability, but I can understand that there's priorities of Stonington. I know in our last meeting, we did discuss, the fire chief had spoke about that turn radius right there, the general stories, and one of the suggestions that we were just brainstorming, some of the things I remember saying from my notes were, you know, have we thought about making that light kind of go, making a, make a hard stop for the oncoming traffic, so that that fire truck can make the turn radius, and/or possibly taking away that parking spot that's right there on the end, so that way that there's a better angle and a line of sight. So, it's one thing that it's not going to be fixed, but we do have to figure out a way to work around it. And overwhelmingly, I heard from the fire chief that that turn is, can be very dangerous, you can't see over, there's no light there, so it's just two stops, but maybe there's some way to talk to the state, that was one of the suggestions at the last meeting from the notes, to ask them to maybe temporarily put in a blinking light, and it could be controlled by the fire department, I've seen in other towns in certain lights, where it could be blinking, you know, for now, as a red, but they could go to a solid red when the truck is coming through possibly. I don't know, I'm no expert on that, but that might be a way to, that turn, I'm in Old Mystic a lot, I have a few friends over there in that corner, and it can be quite cumbersome, and especially in the time of need when there is an accident on the highway and everybody's filtering through there. When that's jammed up and there's emergency for a truck to get through, it's nearly impossible. But there may be a way that we can control it with a light, or maybe taking away that parking spot that's right there, so that they have a better turn radius. I'm not sure if you guys got any feedback from the state on that.
And of course, he's been here for like, two hours, and he just locked out. I'll follow up through, through John on that.
We'll follow up. But I do, I do appreciate that, and I look any way to collaboratively work, and if the town manager can work with the state to get something, I think that would be great. My one question though, is there any needs right now or concerns with safety? I know one of the things that I had brought up at the one point, it was like, many budgets ago, it was, do we take the beams down or not? And, and I was one of the ones in favor of, you know, let's take those beams down so people can't climb on them, to kind of preserve it, and it didn't change the tapestry moving forward, if you had to build, you still would have to take them down. So is there anything else down there that's critical, that you guys are hearing from residents, that are safety concerned, that need to be buttoned up? Because it just, you know, it can be a bit of an eyesore, but any way to take the pressure off the neighbors.
Yeah, I know on, I can't remember what you guys did on your side, but I know on our side, we, and we did it in consultation with the fire chief, and it can be changed at any time, but we did some plantings to help buffer, and we changed it out to like a wooden guard rail instead of the metal, just to help the aesthetic a bit down there, so there's some trees and shrubbery and mulch, and it kind of gives a buffer, to your point, to that edge, so it's even further back.
We did the same thing.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought you did the same thing.
Great. Like I said, I understand it's not a priority right now, but I hope that it, at some point, if it becomes one, that you guys are on board, if we don't get the money from the state, and we can work collaboratively to help that section of town, because I know it's one of the things from many campaigns ago that people really, really were passionate about, and I just want to keep advocating for them. Thank you for all your help.
Councilor Garcia?
Thank you. So it was indicated recently to us that Stonington would likely not be funding it this year. Mr. Burt, you had sent an email to us that you sent to Representative Conley, was that also distributed to Senator Summers?
Yes, yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then Representative Conley reached back out to make sure that Stonington would not have an issue with allowing us to, you know, on their land, basically, to build the bridge, and, I don't, yeah, they're good as long as they don't have to pay.
Well, thank you. Very nice of us. So, so this is, even since I've been on the RTM, I have been pushing for this, because as someone with a public safety background, this one's hard for me, because it's something that's just so common sense. And I understand where your board of finances is at, I understand that there's fiscal responsibility to taxpayers, completely understand that. And I'm, I'm very happy that the hydrant issue has been addressed. However, the big thing is emergency response times, and that's something that I understand because seconds matter in emergencies, and that's something that the Groton constituents have really been harboring on for years, is that they feel that their emergency response times are lagging, understandably so. So something that, you know, sitting here and thinking about what we can do, I'm hoping something you'll consider, is that perhaps you sign on to a letter with us to the state, to Representative Conley, to Senator Summers, the fire chief is involved, and we all, you know, approach the state together to get this funding. So I hope that's something you'll consider.
Yeah, no, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Westphal?
Just to expand on something that Councilor Board along was talking about, there is a system, it's called Opticom, which does emergency vehicle preemption, and it can allow you to control that light, turn it to solid red, or put a flasher, or put a strobe in it, or something like that, so, and that I think would be an assistance there, and it's, it's not ridiculously expensive. And the state does support putting it in, in certain locations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Council Board along?
And maybe that ask, that joint ask maybe for that light and control could be, in two phases, maybe get that going immediately, because there is a, you know, response time and a traffic time, and then the joint to try to get funding to repair the bridge, but, you know, I know that's something we brought up last year, and I was hoping we were a little bit further along on it, but it'd be great to get that, that moving, because we don't know, from, from the day even they approve the money and the day they break ground, that light, you know, if we stress that it's, it's a safety, you know, concern, I'm almost positive that they're going to move, would, would consider moving on that one. So a strong letter would be nice.
And not to diminish in the potential safety concern, because it's certainly there, but I think where we've run into issues with trying to address this in the past is that there isn't any accident data, and obviously you want to be as proactive as you can, but there aren't any statistics to back up that there have been any issues at the intersection, so I think that's where we've had a hard time looking for funding, but it's, it's still worth asking, and if we're asking for a bridge, you know, and then maybe even in that same letter, we could bring up this blinking light, but I think that's where it's been a bit, it hasn't been for lack of trying on your town manager's part, you know, or anyone on the Stonington side, it's just, it's hard when obviously there's, you know, failing bridges everywhere, and there's only so much state money to go around and town money.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the thing is, we don't want an accident, right, an outlier. Unfortunately, sometimes we move on things once tragedy happens, like, you know, the AED machine that I was bringing up today for town buildings, you know, just, I sat down and I was watching.
I was like, I don't know how many we have, so thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a huge thing, and one of the things that I was left with in one of the meetings I was in, and it said, check your town, where do you stand with AED machines for children and adults? I mean, if someone was to go down here, we might have an emergency responder, I know I can operate an AED, I'm sure Cassieri can, and many others, but there's, if there's not one in here, we have to wait for one to arrive. And so, so, so we don't want that to happen, right? So my, my thing is, let's be proactive versus reactive, and the thing is, is we have enough data, as Councilor Cassieri stated, you know, from the first responder's side, that the time lag is there. So if we're able to control the light and increase that truck getting out faster, so that we, we are, we have the data to prove that the time is taking longer for responses. So we can use it from that, and a potential accident could happen. So maybe that might be an angle to pursue it from. Thank you.
We'll take another look at the parking spot also.
Yeah.
I feel like we did before, but I can't remember, we have a traffic authority meeting coming up to look at it. By the way, I did find out there's an AED right out in the lobby, right outside CR3, so, we do have one here.
Thank you, Council Franco?
Thank you. Thanks for coming and discussing this topic with us. Last time you had come to our council, and we discussed this, there was chalk of one of our counselors meeting with your finance department and having conversations over the past, you know, to work on this before it came to us this time. Has that ever happened?
I don't think so, and I don't have, obviously, any of my notes in front of me. I remember people talking about maybe going down in person and meeting at the bridge, or looking at things, and then, I think, I'm sure everyone got busy, but I don't think there was any specific follow-up, but obviously, your, your town manager is very proactive in communication and reaches out frequently on, you know, different topics, but I don't think any counselors have come to Stonington.
Just a point of information I offered in that meeting.
Council, Council Franco has a floor.
I'll add it after.
All right, I was just curious as to if there's, we're talking about working together, and if there would be ways, if we could work together, you know, this would, you know, over the past year, that would have been something that may have been good to understand where we were coming from, and when the state was flush with money and the federal government was giving out money, we could have maybe potentially asked some of our legislators, even at the federal level, for assistance, if we had known this. But thank you for coming, and I appreciate your input, and hopefully, the letter for the state might work for us. Thank you.
I may just add, Councilor Melendez, I just wanted to state that I also heard...
Just one second, just one second, please. Okay. You've had your two chances to speak, is this a question you're asking?
Sure, yeah, the question, I'll, yeah, a question.
Okay, what's your question?
The question that Councilor Franco raised, I had a question. I was in that meeting, and I was, I said I'd put my name forward, but I never received an email. Was there ever anything ever sent out that maybe I didn't get?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, so we'll move on from that.
Thank you, just want to make sure, because nothing came out.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes, and again, thank you for meeting with us, I know it's getting late, and you, I've got your own town to run, so, but, you know, just as far as this bridge goes, this has been an item that was a hot-button topic as soon as they joined the council, almost five years ago now. And time and time again, just like every other counselor here, we've heard from Old Mystic residents, and, you know, on both sides of, you know, Groton and Stonington, the need to protect public safety. Just to make it abundantly clear, I do represent both Groton and Stonington in my other capacity as state rep, and will be serving on the Finance Revenue and Bonding Committee. And although the bridge does not fall within the district, you know, very much look forward to supporting that request, and also, I have spoken directly to Representative Howard about this, but I know he does represent that, that part of the Stonington side of Old Mystic, and is a friend of public safety. So, I, you know, the one, the beauty of our delegation is, especially on matters of local importance, we do row in the same direction. So, things, for things to get funded, you need folks outside of just the folks who directly represent those communities. So, just as far as resilience he goes, as you brought up, one of the more exciting things that Groton and Stonington will continue working together on, and we really don't have a choice, you know, both sides, the river will be equally impacted by 20, seal of our rights by 2050. And as we've talked offline, kind of ad nauseam, you know, the importance of investing in not just hardening our coastline where there is no choice, but to also allow for living shorelines. As the mayor knows, last year, we welcomed Senator Blumenthal, we were able to obtain five, seven hundred, a thousand dollars from the federal government for a resiliency project in Esker Point to develop a living shoreline, and I think that can really serve as a model. So to the extent that, you know, we can leverage our state, you know, our federal partners and our, you know, the state of Connecticut to utilize funding for those causes, certainly on board and will support. But just as far as, you know, short-term rentals goes, I think, you know, it is so important that, as a council, we watch what Stonington does, and I do want to publicly acknowledge you for, you know, holding these public meetings, it's not easy, you know, especially, you know, an issue that where both sides are very passionate. I know this council's familiar, but you've really put your neck out there, and that put forward, I think, a, a, a really good proposal that I think Groton ought to consider moving forward, really making it clear that, you know, short-term rentals should be limited to residential, residents, you know, owner occupied, if you will, so. And then, in the Groton case, you know, aside, you know, as an aside, you know, the importance of preserving the zoning for the existing, you know, respecting the burrows and knowing fire district as to allowing them to regulate their issues. So, let's keep working on it together, and thank you again for coming out tonight. First look.
Thank you. Councilor Garcia?
Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify for people watching at home, because you did mention the statistics for lack of accidents, and I just wanted to explain this a little bit and kind of hash it out. So, my understanding is that the chief was concerned about that intersection, however, I think one of the more important issues is that, because of that intersection, he's having to, forced to go out to 184 sometimes, rather than be, be able to get out to that intersection. The fact that there has been no accidents is a testament to Old Mystic fires driving, because it is such a complicated intersection. But I think the bigger issue is having sometimes to take that extended response time and have to go back out to 184 to get to the Groton side. So I just wanted to clarify that and explain that out a little bit better for people watching at home, because I know we did hash it out the last time we spoke about this a year ago, but I, I think there's a big difference between lack of accidents and the response times. Thank you.
Maybe, yeah, and just maybe that's something that could go in the letter.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any other hands, I want to thank you for coming and giving, being so generous with your time. If you ever need the favor to be repaid from Groton to gum, I'm sure we can arrange that, but thank you for being here.
Thank you, myself, very much, and just say, again, I just want to say, you have amazing staff, and they've been just wonderful partners on so many different projects, so just a big thank you to them also. So, thank you.
Good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Board of Ed Association of Groton School Administrators Agreement.
May we take a five-minute recess?
Sure, we'll be back at 8:47. Council's back from recess at 8:51. And on to Board of Ed Association of Groton School Administrators Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we begin this discussion, I would like to disclose that I am an employee of Groton Public Schools, and I will be recusing myself from this item as to prevent any perceived conflicts of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the Superintendent of Schools, along with the Chairman of the Board of Education, and I see other board members here as well. Welcome. Welcome, oh, you're muted, Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Kim and I have been on multiple board meetings, so this is like our third meeting and counting this evening. How are you doing?
Very good, how are you?
Good. We were really pleased to have Juliet Parker join us with the negotiation teams of the board, and felt that this was a very fair contract.
All right, sounds good. Do counselors have any questions? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Superintendent Austin. Can you just tell us how many people this affects in this, in the board or the school department?
Our administrative union is probably one of our smaller unions. We have approximately two to four administrators in each of our schools. We have seven schools. We also have an administrator in pupil personnel at central office with three supervisors that assist her. And, you know, that's what really makes up the district. We also have a couple coordinators, a humanities coordinator, and a special ed coordinator, and a STEM coordinator that really helps their part, their day, they work a day as a teacher and a day as an administrator, and help coordinate grade six through 12.
So are you able to give me a number?
It's one of our smaller unions.
Are you able to give me a number?
I can get it to you in the morning, to be exact.
Okay. How many total employees are in the Groton School system?
Like I said, I can get you that number. If I had known that you were going to ask those questions, I would have been prepared.
Okay, I might, they're along the lines of, just wanted to know what kind of effect they're having, going to have on the budget. So if it's, if it's a small number, it probably doesn't have much. If it's a bigger one, it does have more.
So our contracts altogether are running about, they usually run about three point, three percentage points increased. But I don't have the exact number for the administrators themselves.
Okay, and then my, my last question is, you renegotiated this contract. Usually when we, I know from our human resource director, when we get a new contractor agreement, she shows us the changes. Can you just, I don't need all the changes, just, is there a major change that you did in this, or are you just tweaking it? Or what was the change that you did?
There really were not major changes. There was no additional, you know, administrative person in the unit. I would say that we really looked at all the data around the state to make it very viable. So we looked and compared to other districts that had already gone through. Of course, we have an awesome attorney who works with us. And like I said, I think it's a very fair contract when I look at what other districts in the surrounding areas did.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Watson.
Susan, I think one of the major changes that we've been able to do with actually all of our contracts, with the contracts that specifically makes, that would be important for the town council to know, is that we've gone from a three-year contract to a four, four-year, did I say three-week, I meant three-years.
She said three-year, to a four-year.
To a four-year, to a four-year contract, which just adds more stability for the administrators, that also helps us as a board to, for our finances. So that, I think, I'm sorry, I did not know who was asking that question, so I apologize.
No, it was me.
But, but that was, that was part of like what we were able to kind of, that was new. And we are moving all of our contracts, or we're trying to move all of our contracts from a three to four-year extension.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Baumgartner.
Yes, we've got all my favorite people on the agenda tonight. But I just want to acknowledge Chairman Watson, Councilwoman Watson, and our esteemed Superintendent for just your due diligence on this matter, and very much look forward to supporting this very fair contract. And also want to acknowledge our colleague, Counselor Parker, who has served on this negotiating committee. So all around, I did review the contract ahead of the meeting, and I think it's a fair deal, and agree that the four years is better than three. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Borla.
And I must add that this was a lovely experience working with Councilwoman Parker. She was an active participant and was a fair participant, but was able to also hold all viewpoints. And so it was an absolute delight to work with her. Thank you.
And this wasn't the first time. She's actually volunteered a couple times to help serve with us, so it's really much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you for that service, Counselor Parker. Counselor Borla, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you so much. It was, you know, pretty easy to read through. It has helped in the past when we've gotten changes in contracts, even with job descriptions from our HR director in the town. When she's updated it, she kind of would put things in red when it came to us, because when we get our agenda on Thursday night, you can kind of hone right in on those items to kind of look at the contract and know exactly what changed from the previous year. So that was just one of the questions I had, if it's possible that you can maybe color-code it for the next time of the contract, just so we can kind of narrow in on the exact changes, you know, because if you read the document once, you just kind of want to see what the changes are. Yeah, it's just, it was just harder to find like exactly what changed initially. So if there's a way to like just do an introductory page to kind of highlight those changes, it would be a little bit more helpful in, in the contract. Like, I know when we're negotiating other contracts with other unions and stuff, they'll, they'll put right in there, the attorney will put on section, you know, five, this is where the change was in the actual document. So it's just a little bit more reader-friendly, but other than that, I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. I was just looking for readability and, you know, just quickness to get through the document resolve, just a minor thought.
Well, thank you for future reference.
Yeah, and is there any other changes? I know that you guys recently at the high school switched, I know someone left and you replaced a assistant principal. In the scope of duty and responsibilities, is that section changing at all?
There are some slight changes that the principal and I have discussed to make it, you know, more of a house system so that students would have an assistant principal, you know, based on their alphabet and counselors that would really get to know the kid, so you can make a large school a little smaller. So we are, we are so delighted to have Armita Hodge as our assistant principal at the high school. She's, you know, an exceptional leader, exceptional teacher. She'll never lose the teacher in her. And I think staff and students really applauded the decision, and, you know, she's just going to contribute a great deal to that high school, as she has.
Is there anywhere else in this document that you guys want to narrow in that we should be familiar with?
You know, I, I, this year was really not a year that we've added anything to it really surmountable. We really, and like I said, like Kim said, going to the four-year was a big step for them, and the administrator contract kind of often leads the way for the others. But we did have it done. We added a year for paraprofessionals, but we're getting ready to go back into a four-year cycle with them. We did it with the GEA, and it really is, I think, an efficient way to do the business.
And my last question is, from a tax standpoint, what are you looking at as an increase based on this new contract?
As far as, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what your question was.
Overall cost increases based on this new, this new changes in contract?
I can, I've got my, I don't have it right in front of me, but I can absolutely get to that. Like I said, they've been running about 3% in average, but I can get you the specifics of the administrative contract tomorrow morning.
So that 3% increase is what you're stating?
Yeah, for, in general, for the entire, you know, population, for, you know, business, the, both the salaries and benefits are what really are the drivers of a budget typically. the, both the salaries and benefits are what really are the drivers of a budget typically, and they certainly amount to three-quarters of a school budget.
Yeah, it would just be helpful if we're, you know, because from a standpoint up here, people ask us, well, what's the tax liability?
Right.
And, and I'm voting on something, I don't have that in front of me, so.
Well, I'd be happy to get you that in the morning.
Well, not no vote, but we're discussing it. I mean, it just would be nice to be able to know in the future. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I just want to say, I think it's, it looks like a very fair contract to have two, two and a half, you know, increases, which is minimal in today's inflationary times, so I commend you on those efforts, and grabbing some cost share as well is, would seem to prove beneficial. But I just had a question, and maybe it's because my package isn't, isn't up to speed. I'm, I'm missing section eight, Article nine, which is the graduate study reimbursement. I'm not sure if my package doesn't contain it, or if it, there was just an administrative oversight. And if so, I would just be interested to know what that graduate study reimbursement consists of.
So really, people have to kind of pre-apply if they're in graduate work, and it can be, be in the amount of up to 50%.
So with no cap, 50% of graduate work without a cap?
Graduate school credit, yep, of their work, payback.
Okay, that's a great benefit. Okay.
It's a wonderful benefit.
Yeah, do you have a lot of?
And, you know, it's something that brings really high-quality teachers into the district. It keeps them well-qualified and educated. Between that and our professional learning that is, we've really secured through many DODIA grants, so, you know, and teachers like to stay in Grattan. We've been really blessed that people who graduate from Fitch or people in this area come back to teach here and stay. So, you know, I'm really, really very proud to serve in this district.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
I'm also missing that page nine, so probably everyone is.
I, I will get that to you. I've got my list running here.
Thank you. Counselor Westervelt?
I was actually going to make the comment that there's a lot of pages missing out of this. A number of pages that are missing, so it's kind of hard to read through it.
Okay, so we'll get all of that, all of those pages in the full documents of the council. Does anybody have discussion?
So this, I have a question. This will come back to us to vote on, or no?
There's no vote. This, this is just, when they, when they do the contract, it, we just have to review within thirty days.
Yeah, it'd be great, it'd be great to get those.
If you do nothing, it stands approved. The council does have the authority to reject the economics of it, so just to be clear.
Okay.
And when would that be?
Which would create, though, I'm sure, huge rights issues.
I just asked that we just get the copy of the full document.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Ms. Austin and Ms. Kim. It was wonderful working with them, and it was, we worked well together with everyone. It was very easy. It was, I shouldn't say easy. It was interesting, and we had serious discussions, and it worked well. And what we've all brought forward, what they ratified and brought forward, it, it was the best we could do with this, and everyone was very happy without having to go to any arbitration. We did this.
Right, and spending more money.
And spending more money. That was my goal. Our goal was to make sure we all got together and worked it out. And yes, we just need the odd pages, just to let you know. That's what.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened with sending that to you. I wish I had known beforehand that you didn't receive the entire packet, so I will make sure when I go back to the office that you get everything you need.
Thank you.
And if I could just say kind of true confessions, and I guess it's my bad that I hadn't reviewed your agendas specifically, because I was just really, I was just really honed in on field. If in, if in the future, if the Board of Ed stuff is going to be talked about, just to make sure that we're jingled toward that, so that Susan would have looked at the contract, you guys could have said, hey, we don't have all the pieces, because you have every right to have all the information. It's really important. That's only, that's really the only way to be collaborative. And so, so we'll make sure that you get the contract in its entirety, and if, if you need before you, do you have to vote on it next, next month, or, or, John?
It's thirty days, it's thirty days from being received by the clerk, and the school, Superintendent was aware this was on the agenda tonight, just to be clear.
Okay.
Yeah, but, yeah, thirty days from the receipt, and I don't know what date this is, if the letter probably says it.
Yep.
It's, it's thirty days from the filing.
Pretty much today, it's.
Thirty days from the filing of the town clerk. Just to be clear, we don't, we don't have to vote on it. It's just.
It stands approved if you do nothing.
Right, right. We just review it within thirty days. If we choose to do nothing, then it's approved, and, and we can choose to reject it.
Okay, okay. So, so what I then am hearing is that you just want to make sure that you guys get the full contract, and, and you will be good to go? Is that what I'm hearing from you guys?
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for being here. We want to be respectful of your time and, and of the work you did. We look forward to seeing the full document, but in advance of that, just thank you for all the work you did on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to Claude Chester School property reuse. Welcome.
Good evening.
So we have the Director of Parks and Rec, the Director of Planning and Development Services here for some background.
Good evening. Last time we came to the council, we presented the feedback that was collected from the online survey and also the visioning session. At that time, the council requested that the, the next step be to develop conceptual plans based on the feedback that was presented, and Kent Frost has, has done that, and you should have received that information, the different conceptual plans in your packets. And Chad is here this evening to kind of go over and answer any and all questions that you may have.
John, are we able to bring those?
Yeah.
Just to refresh, good evening, everybody. Chad Frost with Kent Frost, Parks and Architecture. Last time I was here, we talked about this. This was our summary of the public input that we had received, and I just wanted to review it real quick before we looked at how we incorporated that into the plans. So the high priority items, if you remember, is the removal of the school building, a building with restrooms, ideally a community pool with a splash pad, the athletic fields, which at this point was two multi-use fields, and one, what we'll call a 50/70, the mid-sized baseball field. Streetscape improvements, a pavilion shade structure, bicycle facilities, native plantings, pedestrian connectivity. So those were all the highest-ranked items. Then our mid-priority items was a playground, events place, and public art or placemaking, and the low-priority items was a town green outdoor classroom and possible town office uses. So that was the list back up on the screen. So what we did was we looked at the overall area. We started just on Claude Chester, and then we said we should expand the scope a little bit bigger to look at a greater area of land and how all these things could fit. So John, if you want to scroll down. So this is, can you zoom out a little bit? Option one that you had in your packet. There's three options, and we kind of had this bigger scale picture, and then zoomed in on the next slide of each one. So this option, you can see on the Claude Chester site, we have the two multi-use rectangles up top. We have the 50/70 baseball field in that, I'll say, the lower-left corner. Parking to facilitate all of those three uses. In the center there, you can see that little red area. We have a pavilion there that has a, a large area underneath it, which we think is ideal, could be used as a stage or performance area, so that you could have activities out on the fields facing back to a space in the middle. The, we have pedestrian connectivity all the way around. We have a double array of trees along the road with sidewalk, bike lanes, and parallel parking all along the road. And then we've also shown some improvements on aquatic plains to the parking area. We haven't really expanded it. We've just reoriented it all, so that you can get significantly more cars in there, because we know there's a parking shortage at the aquatic plains. And then the one item that you won't see that, that was on the list, the community pool splash pad takes up a decent amount of space. And so in this concept, actually all the way down there in the lower left-hand corner of the building, or of the plan, you can see the, the town hall complex and the community center and the fields there, and in that very lowest left, yep, perfect. We're getting rid of what I think is called D-wing on the back of the community center, and then putting in, that would be the natatorium, right? So that you have a pool and the facilities that go along with it, and the splash pad is there just outside the building, kind of in that southern foyer or forecourt of the buildings. We like this, or we're recommending this as one of the options because of, obviously it takes a building that is out of use and puts in a new building that facilitates staffing for eases, right? So that you already have staff in that building, you need a new building, it's easier to be able to staff all of that together. The, it also takes some advantages of locker rooms and offices. You don't have to duplicate the spaces as much, so we can have a smaller footprint of a building and still get the uses in there. What I will say, one of the things we, we don't like about the location of the splash pad here, it's nice that it's on the south face of all the buildings, it'd be kind of a nice warm pocket for more of the year. However, it's not very visible, right? The public doesn't really get to see it. If you're driving by anywhere, you don't get to see it. And one of the nice things I think about splash pads is that they're kind of out there more visible for the public, so kids from the neighborhood can feel it, can run over and use them, as opposed to kind of being tucked away behind a, a facility where they're out of view a little bit more. So that's kind of the downside of, of this.
Just a point of information, could you, point to these things on the bill, a little bit clearer. I'm just, I was sort of writing notes down, and I can't, I don't know where you are pointing to.
I'll do this. So, on this plan, I was just talking about all the way down here, right? So this is town hall building, the community center. These are the one gym and the other gym that are currently used. This is the wing of the, oop, the wing of the building that we'd be removing and then possibly putting the pool in that area.
Okay, does that make sense? What is the thing up in the, past the, the right of the two fields?
This?
No, down. Keep going where you were. Keep going a little bit more to the right, to, to, towards John. Just move towards John. That, what is this?
I'm just going to point randomly. All right, so that was a, a new pavilion shade structure. This is the existing playground. What we know for aquatic plains is some shortage of, of shade structures as well as maintenance facility staff, or, or space. There's a little shed here that is kind of used, but it's always full, so having the ability to bring stuff in from the back from a maintenance side, and then have kind of more of a public front. So that was the idea there. And I'll just point out, this is a, a smaller playground, so again, if you had youth sports going on and parents are here watching activities, younger, younger or older siblings could be playing on the playground instead of having to go to the kind of other park. And I'll just note that in all the concepts, this is the very big ridge of ledge. We left that kind of alone just because of the expense. And what I'll, I should have said from the beginning, these are very high-level concepts, right? None of this is set in stone. What we're really looking for you tonight is a direction of, do we want to proceed like this? You know, and the arrangement could be completely different, but does this, is this how the property wants to be used as we go forward? Because Park and Rec has money to start really designing everything, but they can't do that until we have some idea of if this is the right use for the Claude Chester property. So that's kind of the, the main goal. And if you want to hand down, John, to the next, it just zooms in a little bit more. Yep, so that just is an enlargement. You can see better circulation throughout, better vehicular and pedestrian circulation. We have a drop-off, so that if you're coming in, you can drop off kids all along the fields. This is kind of that central hub with a big pavilion and entertainment space underneath of it, the walkway all the way around, and the, the parallel parking along the street and better pedestrian connectivity. So with that, we can go on to option two. So this essentially stays very similar. The only change here is the pool's still here, but the splash pad has been relocated from this complex up here where that other building was that you were just asking about. So the splash pad comes up and is directly adjacent to the tercentennial playground. When we do that, we have to now put in a, a building, because the splash pad has to have all of the plumbing and sanitary conditions and things like that, that we, if we had it down here, there kind of, don't have to be duplicated. We can use them together. We separate them, we have to have two different services. From a public perspective, this probably serves pretty well, because there's a lot of families already going there. It'd be really nice. It's in a much more visible location. Only thing we're not so psyched about with that is that that proximity is also an issue, because you have kids that might be wet from the splash pad running across onto the playground, creating slippery conditions. You've got the sand area over there. You don't want the sand coming back and forth, so although they'd be side-by-side, we would have some fencing and some separation and just a little bit more maintenance and control, although it might be a nicer location for the public. If you want to zoom down to the next one, there's just the enlargement. You can see it just a little bit better. All of this stays the same. The, I should have mentioned before, we had a maintenance building here and a bathroom. The walkway connection stays the same. We just add a shade pavilion, the splash pad complex, and then the building for maintaining it. If we go to the next. So option three looks at the possibility, is if we put all of the splash pad, the natatorium, the pool, on Claude Chester property. We don't have enough room to be able to do that, the two fields and the, the 50/70 baseball field, but what we have heard is that at Sutton Park, the, the 50/70 field is going to go as an overlay on top of one of the fields at Sutton Park right now. They're working on doing that for next season. So the feeling was, is that it might be possible, if that is a, as a good solution, that then you could contemplate having a larger building here for the pool and splash pad in a highly visible public area. The downside, as you can see, this building is significantly larger than it was when it was down here, because now you need all the, the staff and the support and the maintenance and the facilities and office space and community rooms, all those things go into this building now. So the, the footprint got bigger. The footprint is completely fictitious, right? We're just showing you a square footage of what it likely have to be, and then we're showing the splash pad oriented along the street, so it's a lot more visible, and a smaller splash pad then kind of associated with the, the community space in the middle. Very vibrant park, obviously a little bit more expensive, because things get bigger and more expensive in the center. So if you want to go to the last one, that's just to zoom in on, on that one option. And again, what I would say is, what we're really here is not to say I really like A or B or C. It's all of what we've heard from the public. This is what we can accomplish on that site. We can't do quite everything all at once. It's either the pool, you know, is here and the baseball field goes somewhere else, or the baseball field comes here and the pool goes somewhere else. So kind of the conversation is, you know, do we think this building and, and that use that we heard the public wanted, is that something we need to hold space for, that the council's going to be willing to spend money on in the near future? Or, you know, do we go in the other way and look at more fields and event and, and public space? So I think that's kind of the, the discussion for tonight. And that's my, my quick run-through. Happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. Let me just start by asking a couple of quick questions. So I see you've added some parking here, right? Am I correct?
Correct.
In between, okay. Because, you know, we have events there, and one of the main issues is there's just not enough parking there.
Yes.
Do you know about how much parking added, and is that going to perhaps be sufficient, or are we still going to be, you know, still overflow parking into, into the neighborhood?
This should be sufficient. What we've shown at Paquonic Plains as the addition, we normally like to say about somewhere between 60 to 80 spaces per field. That allows you to have each field occupied and then have a turnover coming in as the other teams are still getting ready to leave. And so both of those parking lots can accommodate all of those uses and shouldn't be maxed out on a normal daily use. You know, if there's a tournament, something like that, there will be a handful of times a year, but it won't be a daily occurrence like it is now.
Okay. Second thing, real quick, I know this plot, the organization I see using this the most is obviously the football and the cheerleading. I'm seeing this is at two soccer fields. Do you think they'll still be able to utilize that?
Absolutely. So I should have explained that. The reason we show a soccer field is it's the largest field there is. Lacrosse is a little bit smaller and football's even smaller than that. So if a soccer field fits, everything else fits within it. And I'll also note that those are the, there's a range in size of all fields. Those are the largest soccer fields. We'll probably actually shrink them down just a little bit to make them fit in reality, but we just put them in there to, as placeholders.
Okay. And the only thing, the only last thing, I would say, I'm hugely supportive of this project and I certainly want it to go through. It does seem like it's going to require bonding. I mean, that's my opinion. Do you think that that's correct? Or do, because, I mean, as a CIP, I just don't see it. But how do you see, like, how many years is this project going to take? And is it going to take a referendum on bonding? Like, what is the process here? I know this is like very early.
That's really more of an internal issue. I guess the first thing is, let's say you had all the money and could do it all at once, what kind of timeframe would you be talking about doing this?
Construction-wise, we could build this in a year.
Because otherwise, you know, if you did it by CIP, you're not going to do, let's say you wanted to do CIPs only, you're not going to do the pool by CIP.
Right.
You know, the other stuff, you could probably piece, you know, do a section each year, you could probably do that, but the pool puts it in a whole different category.
Right.
And do keep in mind that if it's here, it is going to be a lot more costed, you know, with staffing and things, if you had it actually outside here.
Okay. Right, cool. Councilor Parker, did you have a hand?
Yeah, my question, yes, I did. So thank you guys, I know it's a lot of work. So technically, this is not only a Claude Chester feasibility, this is also talking about if we do option one or option two, talking about the community center. So if everybody starts to look at it, it's not really just Claude Chester. So verbiage-wise, I think that should change or say something different. Is there tentative dollar amounts for each of these feasibility studies? I mean, costs along the way? Because I would like to see what it's going to cost us potentially.
Not yet, is the short answer. Generally, we think, you know, fields are generally a little over a million dollars apiece at this point. And, you know, that pool building would be in the tens of millions of dollars. What I would say is what we're trying to get out of this is, in concept, is this where we want to be headed? Do we want to use this property for this use in the future? I understand you have to make budget decisions. We want to get to, we need to do more detailed plans to get those budgets, you know, but we want to make sure we're headed in the right direction first.
You said ten, over 10 million?
For that pool building? Yes.
Which option was that? Any of those options?
I would say definitely the option three for sure. The other ones, you might be able to come in less than that.
Because if we came in and did option one.
Right. It's a smaller building.
Because it's our, the smaller building.
You can take advantage of some of the other footprint of that building.
So on top of figuring out about the pool, we would need to make sure we have insurance. So what's the liability insurance on that? That's another thing I need to, we need to cost out. And the entrance is still going to be the same on going through Harry Day Drive?
We are continuing to show that as well as a better connection through Paquonic Plains.
Okay. Only reason why is because I'm going to ask, and as long as Harry Day Drive name stays there, I'll be very happy. That was my principle and a lot of other people that grew up around here. If we can keep at least one of the names around here, I would greatly appreciate that. He put in a lot of time in that school, so it would be a nice way of honoring him. I see it, I just want to know what the cost is going to be. And if, are we bonding or are we trying to find special funds? Mr. Burke?
We've had some internal discussions. Unless you had more of a economic development piece, I think it'd be hard to fund this externally. You never know, but you might be able to get some dollars, you know. But I think, yeah, it's going to cost definitely mostly for us, I believe, mostly on the town. And again, bonding is kind of, all depends on what you choose and whether you phase it and...
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Councilor Boardel.
Thank you. As someone who sat on the athletic task force, I think this is a great visual concept. I still have concerns at the lack of facilities at the high school and the underservice of those fields that struggle currently in their existence visually in comparison to other towns that I visit, our bleachers, our, everything's out of code and out of order, to say the least. My concern is the maintenance. As a person who frequents the aquatic plains for walking, you know, even the buildings there are starting to look a little bit shabby, I'm being honest. They're due for a power wash, they need paint on the doors, there's broken siding over there. The walkway, the path that I walk, when I go there, you know, try to do my three miles or whatever I do there, is needing surfacing. I had brought that up during COVID because it was being utilized. We realized during COVID that the gym concept was kind of not so great and you need to be outside and it still hasn't been maintenance yet. So as we grow, what is it going to look like? It's one thing to build it, but the town, in my opinion, struggles with maintenance and vision and cost to keep the enhancement up. So, you know, it's, you know, I want a Porsche, but I don't want to pay the maintenance and the parts. But, you know, so, you know, so it's kind of a thing. So I just hope that, you know, even the, some of the equipment at Paquonic Plains Park need repair. You know, just the walk path is just, you know, it floods, it needs more gravel overlay. We have some sinkholes created over there now and it looks like a mess currently. And that was partly from a storm, no offense. With that, as a person who had both ways, well, one son that played football mainly and another one that kind of did for a short time, where the football field was, was a hazard. There was a car accident, a car just went right through that gate onto the field. So I'm questioning what type of protections are going to be on that side for the field? That's very important. Because when the highway shuts down, that's the major artery out. People hop off the highway, come through town and it floods with people. As a person who sees underserved community, swimming should be a public health concern and not having a public pool here is a problem. I think this could help address that. I think, as I said at the last meeting, I can support this, obviously, or I could think about it, I don't know, I haven't seen the numbers. This really needs to go before our community and the area that it's going to serve. These concepts that were presented, we need to have them all up on a board in this room, open it up an hour before for people to come do and view and then come to the podium and speak to what they think of it, along with the numbers. We're at that next phase. For me to just to sit here and say, yep, I like number three, I like them all, but where's our pocket? You know, I really rely on the town to tell me, what can we afford, what can't we afford? And how would that maintenance look? It's a great need, we're in dire need of sports and athletic fields. I definitely like having, I know my time is up, so I'll close, I definitely like having the pavilion as a center point, but I think we're at the next step. My recommendation would be moving towards a public output, not, you know, you did the one thing, this one needs to be more in-depth, maybe also a press release with these items, letting people know this is what you guys have and having people be able to comment on this. We really have to bring the community in now. Thank you. And it looks great.
One on the fieldhouse at the high school, I would anticipate, if you really wanted to do all this, you would bond and that would include the fieldhouse. Fieldhouse is way beyond a CIP. They're looking at the 17 million mark for that fieldhouse. They've submitted a CIP for this year, which, you know, will not go anywhere. But, and then in terms of maintenance, honestly, that's been much more of a factor of past councils than staff, with staff being cut and then CIPs being cut. We're now, that was the point of last, this last budget is the arper dollars to try to catch that back up because it's been neglected for so long. So if we're provided adequate resources, maintenance isn't an issue, but it really does come down to the council.
And I'll just quickly add to, high school, they are working on what their fields need to be. Part of the money that Park and Rec got will go to that study, right? But we need to be able to, kind of be able to tell that consultant who's going to do that study, what Claude Chester, how many fields are we going to put at Claude Chester so that they can, we can write an RFP, go out to bid, select somebody that can do both Claude Chester, Sutton Park and, or Sutton Park fields and then the high school all at once. And the high school is desperate need and there was a meeting recently with Board of Ed to try to figure out how both those groups can work together and hopefully get somewhere faster. Regarding aquatic plains maintenance, I do agree, there's always maintenance that's necessary. I know Park and Rec is expanding, or Public Works on behalf of Park and Rec, is that how it's happening? But the walk is getting expanded and resurfaced.
Right, the walkway is being widened so that we, we have a piece of equipment now that we grade the infields of wall fields. The problem is it's too wide for the existing path at Paquonic Plains Park, so we are intending to widen that path so that we can take that machine and drag, you know, drag the path more frequently to keep it better. As far as the flooding, we've got no control over that and it's going to continue to flood and be wet in that corner and there's really nothing we can do. And I would expect with the sea rise, it's only going to get worse.
And I would add, so, and the lighting is coming, right? We just, we worked, finished on the plans for submitting that to planning and zoning last week.
I'm sorry, could you say that word again? You said you had the plans for?
Lighting, the solar lighting to go around Paquonic Plains as it gets widened and add the lights. But I would say, we work in a lot of municipalities around the state and a lot of Park and Rec facilities. Paquonic Plains Park was built in the 90s, right? It's 25 years old. And to have a natural turf field, three natural turf fields and a synthetic, or not synthetic, but a stone dust path that's still this good a condition, in my opinion, they have done a phenomenal job maintaining it. We don't see any other municipality with natural grass and stone dust anywhere near this quality 25 years later. So, and they do it on a pretty slim budget. I mean, it's like in the not even tens of thousands when we were looking at how much they really spend. I really do think they do a phenomenal job. It could always be better, but it really is pretty good. The car question, car veering off the field, we did look at that. The first line of defense right there honestly is on-street parking. You do parallel parking and it's very difficult for a car to veer off the street, go through cars, up a curb, through two rows of trees and a wooden guardrail to get to the field. So those are all the things that are built in. It should look and feel like a beautiful park that you can visually see into, but it'll be protected by all that infrastructure without like a really ugly guardrail or a big chain link fence.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor McBride?
Thank you. I appreciate all your work on this, respect the work that's been done, thank you very much. I have a couple of questions. I'm not quite sure how to go down this path because I was under these, I guess it's hard for me to make a decision or to make a thought on what direction we should head without cost information. And I was under the impression when we discussed this, I forget how many months ago, that you were going to come back with cost information for more than what are the top two priorities. So I'm a little confused because I specifically remember mentioning or talking that I was concerned that once the residents got wind of how much a water feature or a pool is going to cost, it wasn't going to be number one or two because they're millions of dollars a year just to service, not to maintain, just to run the operation. So I guess I'm just concerned because I don't know how I can move forward with a supporting role. And I'm all for fields, I'm all for that, so don't get me wrong. I'm just saying I don't, I don't feel I can do my due diligence and support the residents and make a recommendation without cost information on not just these two pieces, but also the three or four others that were high. Because I think my job is to ensure the residents have what I think is in the best interest. And I can't, I can't make that decision and support these motions without dollars attested to them. And not just capital dollars, but, and it could be a range, but there has to be some dollars. And then as Tom Andrew Burke mentions, the maintenance costs for these. Because I just feel like if we were to make a decision and I knew we'd move forward with just these two options, we're limiting ourselves to all the other options that were brought forward. And I know the, these I think were the top two, but I think they were the top two on a wish list. They weren't a top two on, with real dollars attested to them. So I kind of look towards, I'd like to get more information and cost information as Councilor Parker mentioned, and maybe have a public hearing as Councilor Boardel had mentioned. But I think there's more due diligence before we can make a decision on what is a substantial piece of property. I mean, it's the heart and soul of, you know, downtown area. And I think, like I said, I'm all for fields, but I think we need to do a little more due diligence. And it's not a rush because, you know, we're, I don't know if we're topped out on our bonding or not, but we're probably a year or two away from being able to go out to bond anyway. So I think, I think we do the due diligence, put some figures as best we can on the top five or seven projects and get some resident feedback on which ones they want. Because I really don't believe when the numbers are put forth with a water feature or pool, the residents are going to want to support the costs going forward. So those are my thoughts. Again, I appreciate all your work, I'm not saying I'm not in favor, but I just think we need a little bit more due diligence before I'm at least comfortable making a decision. So, thank you.
Well, that's part of the step, we just hadn't gotten to that step yet. Normally, we would say, let's narrow it down to what you guys believe is the best option going forward and we put costs on that, but we can certainly do them and try to put a range out there. I would say we normally don't put that out for all of the public to kind of pick and choose because you end up getting like almost an even spread across all choices because everybody wants something different. But we can certainly come back to you with cost estimates.
I guess, just to follow up with that, I don't feel comfortable on narrowing it down to these two because I'm really concerned about the pool. That's, I mean, I'd be in favor of moving forward with the parks and stuff. I had some questions I sent today, but they were more for my own knowledge than for this discussion.
That was part of the, I think that's part of the discussion we want to have. If you feel or if this council feels the pool is not even going to be on the discussion, then we shouldn't be showing it to the public, right? If you think that it's, that yes, we can, we will find a way to fund this and this is what the public wants, then we show that. So that's part of why we wanted that discussion, is do we include it or not?
And I think for me, it's more, I don't, I need numbers, like is the pool going to be $25 million and then it's going to be $2 million a year to operate? You know, how many, you know, what's the operation cost? How many people are going to be using the pool, joining to use the pool, those kind of, there's a lot more that needs to go in, I think, before we, before at least I make a recommendation to say, let's move forward with the pool. Because the pool's substantial dollars.
Yep.
So one of the challenges we face is what you consider a pool and what somebody else considers as a pool could be completely different. So, you know, when I started here 10 years ago, there was money in the budget because the community had said they wanted a pool to do a feasibility study. So that includes, I mean, everyone keeps talking about the expense side, there's a revenue side to pools too. So, you know, the feasibility study would determine exactly what the community wants. You know, do they want a lazy river? Do they want a giant slide? Do they want an eight-lane 50-meter pool or do they want an eight-lane 25-meter pool? So all of those things go into the cost. So, you know, for us to say, well, it's going to cost this much to build, we really can't do that because the public hasn't said, well, this is what we think a pool is. And, you know, we need to come to a consensus on what we think, or what the, we need to know what the community wants as far as a pool. What do they want included? Do they want a splash pad? Do they not want a splash pad? And so I'm not sure how that we can, we can come back and say, well, the pool's going to cost X amount of dollars. We can't say that until we know, yeah, the community wants an eight-lane 50-meter pool. You know, eight laps, or eight lanes, 50 meters or what, or they want a therapeutic pool or, you know, they want a lazy river or a giant slide or an indoor splash pad. So it's, that's a bit of a challenge for us. You know, the fields, it's pretty clear, you know, a soccer field is a soccer field is a soccer field, or I'm sorry, a multi-use field is a multi-use field is a multi-use field, but a pool is completely different.
And also, everything doesn't have to be done at once. So if the council feels, and, you know, we heard that a pool is a high priority item, we've been hearing for a long time, predates us that the town wants a pool, we can show on a concept plan, okay, we have two fields or three fields and a pool, yeah, these are things that we like, let's do some more research on it. And, you know, I think if we were ever to say, yeah, let's move forward with the pool, we then need to do that feasibility study. We need to ask you for money in a budget two years from now. We then need to do that feasibility study. We need to ask you for money in a budget two years from now to do the feasibility study for the pool. But now we're just looking more for a broad concept of, is this, are we going in the right direction? Or do you want us to turn it into a farm instead? I don't know, I'm just picking something, you know. We need to know, all right, how can we start then taking one or more of these concepts forward to the public? Without going so far down the road, we, we know that there's going to be costs, you know. A million bucks or so a field, it's probably going to be one to $2 million to tear down the school. You know, there's site improvement costs. It, it's going to be an expensive endeavor. Or we can just, um, keep studying, but not really getting that far or any closer to some type of an answer.
Am I done?
Yeah.
Counselor Casseran?
Thank you. Um, thank you, because I was going to clarify that we're not making a decision tonight on, we're not picking Plan One or Two or Three, right? You're looking direction from us because we're the elected people to represent people in our town, right? So you're looking for direction from us to then get costs and then to, to get the public hearings from them, correct?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. And we've gone over in the past couple of times that you've come to speak to us about this, about the extensive surveys and the outreach that we've done. We even had a little stats lesson the last time you were here. So to me, I think we have heard excessively about the need for sports fields. To me, it would be more prudent, no matter what, whether there was a pool or not, to have space in that main section of Claude Chester for fields. And I think the pool is nice. I'd personally love a community pool. But I think more people are going to be willing to pay for in the long-term the fields in that area. And then if we find out long-term that the pool is necessary, we do have, sorry, space for it. I'm getting crazy with my pen, uh, space for it in the community center. But we have a main section for sports fields. And I think it's more of a responsible plan too, to plan for that area to be sports fields. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. Um, I was also on the sports field task force and I have attended numerous meetings and heard lots of discussions. So I, this is the first time I'm seeing these renderings. So can you tell me, in between this, I guess, sort of a multi-use field and what the 50/70 is, there looks like, it's not quite rec, uh, square, but it's, it sort of has a reddish hue to it. What is that?
That would be the, uh, shade pavilion, could be an events pavilion. That's where if there was an event to go on, you could do that under that stage slash canopy and have people or an audience out over the fields. Otherwise it's a shade pavilion, you know, where parents and everybody can gather as they drop off and pick off.
Okay. And is it, where the 50/70 field is, would that potentially, could you fit something else in there? If you were going to, if there's a 50/70 field somewhere else in our community?
Fit something else like what? I guess, we couldn't, we could not fit a very, uh, you could fit a smaller field, although I don't think we need a smaller Little League field. You could not fit another, you know, full-size, multi-use field there.
So it, like a soccer field?
It'd be a real small, yeah, like a, a practice, a half-field basically you could fit there, yeah.
All right. Um, because I, Mr. Berry would know better than I, but I believe there was something to do with 50/70 field going potentially over at, behind the community center as well. Is that correct?
We've been talking with Groton Little League about, uh, changing one of the fields, uh, in, in the Sutton Park complex to a 50/70 field. One of the considerations we have to make though is that field is also used by Mystic Little League. And changing, uh, from a Little League field to a 50/70 field, uh, it could reduce, they may not be able to use that, Mystic Little League may not be able to use that field. And I'm not sure that they could absorb the loss of that field, uh, given that there's already a shortage of fields. So that's something that we need to work out. But we are, uh, there's more and more communities are, are creating these transitional fields where kids that are playing Little League suddenly jump up to a field that's considerably larger. So they've, uh, you know, across the nation, they're trying to create this 50/70 field, which is kind of a transitional field size, uh, for, for those kids, I think 12 to 14 or something like that.
So Mr. Berry, in your, your opinion, because you're Parks and Rec, you're the director, do you think a 50/70 field would be the best place at Paquonic Plains in that Claude Chester school area? Or do you think potentially an aquatic center there or over at the community center?
I, I like the location. If, if the community was committed to moving forward and creating an aquatic center, I, I think the better location would be at, um, the Claude Chester property. I, I just think about people coming into town and, you know, along that road and, and the impact that that would have versus kind of tucking it behind, uh, an old, an old building. Uh, I think, you know, Chad made a great point about the, the splash pad. I, I think, you know, that really needs to be someplace that's open and visible and attractive versus kind of tucking it in behind, behind an older building.
Okay. And, and behind this community center, there's potential to put a 50/70 field, is that correct?
Yes, I think there, there is, uh, potential to, to do that. There is two fields back there and we could potentially put the 50/70 field back there. Right now, I think Mystic Little League is probably because of the condition of the field. You know, the fields at Sutton Park are maintained at a higher level. The, the larger field out behind the community center doesn't get used, uh, as frequently.
And if you had an aquatic center, which our community has been just number one priority for decades now, with an aquatic center, as you said, um, there's, there's fees associated with that, but there's also possibly revenue. So would there be member, like if we had an aquatic center, would there potentially be membership fees or usage fees?
Yeah, I would think that would be, um, that's kind of standard. Uh, I'm not sure that I am aware of any facility where you walk in and everything is free. I, I know that the recreation department, we pay to, uh, the college $34,000 a year to get access to the pool for Saturdays and Sunday mornings. And I know that high school is, uh, paying that if not more to have access, uh, for the swim teams.
Okay. And then, um, so in the pools, it most likely be indoors. So because we live in New England and just because of the renderings, it looks like they might be outdoor, but that, they would be indoors, is that correct?
Correct, it is indoors, yep.
Yeah. I, I think the splash pads are outdoors, but the rest is, is indoors.
All right. And, um, I would like to have more research on the aquatic center because that has been a priority for our community for decades. And if we can say, this is maybe the pricing of an aquatic center from whatever the community may want in an aquatic center. And then maybe say, this is the cost, this is the upkeep, this is probably the fees you would pay for it. And this may be the increase in your taxes. And as well as the cost of, um, do aquatic plains with the aquatic, I mean, Claude Chester with the aquatic center and, um, and the other fields. And I do like that there's a lot more parking, a potential another playground. I like that there's a cover first, um, the thought of shade as well as potentially a pavilion with, where we could have events, maybe even with the crowd to be out on the sport fields. That's the direction I would like. And I think eventually this decision is not just from the town councilors because I feel like this is a, a decision that may be bigger than us and would be going to something as a referendum to do bonding. And there might even be a potential to have multiple choices that the community can select from and choose what they want, if anything at all. But I would, I was hoping that it would go to a, you know, bonding and referendum and it wouldn't be piecemealed over numerous years because there's so much more other than this one location for us to do in our community.
Your time has expired?
I just want you to know that I can't see my time. So when somebody's on Zoom, you can't tell how much time you have left and try and wrap up. So maybe in the future we could move the timer if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner?
Uh, yes. Um, again, I just want to thank you all for your work on this. I know it's been, um, some time you've put into this proposal. Just seeing the visuals, it, um, it just makes me, it honestly makes me feel so proud to be a part of a community that is prioritizing our, our future. And by investing in, you know, whether it's athletic fields, investing in, in our, uh, in a, a aquatic, aquatic center, which I, um, think is really the, the, um, the direction we should be going in. Um, it just makes me excited to, to be a resident here and to be a young person looking to raise a family here. So, um, thank you for, uh, speaking very emphatically, in particular, um, Director Berry and your support for an aquatic center. I think it's long overdue. I think this location would be, uh, the ideal location. What I've heard from speaking from, with residents, especially, uh, in, uh, Paquonic Bridge, is the need to have more recreational opportunities for kids who deserve it. And this is an equity issue. You know, there are, um, many children in our own communities that don't know how to swim. And, uh, we live in a coastal community, in many cases, you know, have, uh, ri- rivers and, you know, and, uh, Bluff Point just behind, uh, you know, the town hall here. And, um, you know, we, so many kids cannot take advantage of our natural resources, can't, uh, swim. And, uh, if they're in the water, they, they risk losing their life. And we should not all live in a community that has children that, that don't know how to. So, um, I, I think it really should be a priority. I will do everything in my power at the state level to ensure that we can identify resources, um, for this. But it really, I think, it has to be a part of our, our long-term plan. And, um, you know, I, I understand sports fields are important. They are, uh, included in this, uh, proposal as well. So you, in my opinion, you do get the best of both worlds. And as you've shared, you know, if we want to build more baseball fields, I'm a former Little League, uh, you know, uh, played in Groton Little League growing up. And it's very important that we, you know, invest in our athletics fields, in particular our baseball fields. But there's a, an appropriate location for everything. And if you've shared that, you know, we can have a 50 to 70, uh, field behind town hall, you know, behind the community center, then, you know, that, that, that's great too. So, um, they, everything goes hand in hand. But if we move forward in a very, um, bold way in support of an athletics field that is not at the expense of athletic field. So I want to make that abundantly clear. It's, it would not be my desire in supporting this. So, um, with that said, I, I think we should get the ball moving. As, uh, Mr. Reiner knows and, uh, you know, wrote a letter in support of, of Pleasant Valley, um, proposal for CIEF. But there's going to be multiple rounds. And Groton, you know, will, is a, uh, community that will be, um, the beneficiary of that program for years to come. $175 million allocated each budget year for communities, um, that are eligible for CIEF funding. So I, I say Groton should continue to be bold, punch above our weight, and let's do, let's make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jones?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you, I have no idea what a 50/70 field is. Can you tell me what that is? I'm not a baseball person.
It's just a mid-sized field. That's the easiest way to describe it. So you've got the Little League, so the littlest kids play on a very small field. And then generally, they just jump to the high school field. So you, yeah, you're, you're just, it's baseline.
So is it just feet? Does the 50 stand for some feet?
It's 50 feet from the plate to the mound and 70 from the, between each base.
Base.
Exactly, all right. I just didn't, I, it's thrown around, but I had no idea. And I'm sure lots of other people don't have any idea what it means.
I had to look it up.
So, um, can you just talk a little bit about the thinking of why you put a, a pool on the end of the, um, the community center? Just somewhere there was a shift in your thinking, you said, maybe we should put it over here. Can you just talk a little bit about how you came to that?
Well, conceptually, we looked at everything that came out of the, the public desires. And, and we just spatially tried organizing things, right? And so, um, it, it makes sense to try to keep all fields together from a maintenance perspective. So that's why we looked at, can we get the two athletic, two multi-use fields and the, the 50/70 field all in one with enough room left over for parking and the rest of the amenities? So that's where we started. And then we, you know, clearly there's not enough room for all three of those fields and an athletic, or aquatic facility. So then we were looking for, in that general area, where's the next nearest place? It makes a ton of sense to try to put it by the community center. So we looked for where that could fit and what part of the building was underutilized. And, and that's where we came up with that. And you get a, you know, the economy of putting it there. But it might not be the best location to put it there, but we want to test it to see how it fits.
Cause it needs boilers and it needs pumps and it needs all kinds of stuff that.
Yeah, and you need office rooms and, and lifeguard stations and, you know, there's just, and facilities and, and, yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
I spend a lot of time on Paquonic Plains Park, do a lot of walking there. It's exciting to see that you would, to try to increase the parking lot because that just becomes kind of a big muddy grass field and cars. Certainly during football games and things, it just piles up with, with cars. So that's, that's nice. And I'm, uh, excited about, um, Director Berry, you bring in, changing that track a little bit to make it wider. Cause it's, it's, it's often muddy and you end up walking on the grass and, so. I like the, the idea also of the splash pad back there. I think there's sort of a nice synergy between that and the playground in that back corner. It's where all the kids hang out and there's lots of young families there all the time. So it does somewhat seem to make sense, even if the pool or an aquatic center was over on the other side, that might be a good place to put it. That way it's, all kids are in the same place and a parent could watch one kid playing this way and one kid playing in water. So you, you get coverage from two different directions. So I think that would be an attractive place, but having those two together, I think is an argument. So just for, one parent could watch two kids going two different directions, so. Can you just talk a little bit about the pavilion that's in the center between the fields? Is it okay, I know sometimes athletic directors don't like people walking all over their fields. And in this case, we might have audiences, you know, it's a place you could do summer concerts, you could do movie nights, you could do all kinds of things and people are bringing long chairs and pushing them into the ground and all that kind of stuff. Is I, is that, as athletic director, are you okay with that happening to fields?
There's definitely a concern, you know, these fields would be irrigated. And, you know, you do have to be cautious of how people are using that so that you don't have somebody that, you know, is averse to sunlight and decides to drive their portable umbrella because they want to sit and listen to a concert, you know, into the ground. So, uh, yeah, I, do I think that, you know, the field's going to be used for, uh, more than one thing? Absolutely, it's just going to take some, uh, education of, you know, whatever group is using it. You know, I certainly wouldn't see a car show out there, but.
No, I mean, I'm a strong, I, I love the idea of having a pavilion. Yeah. Chad, what you did in stores, I think is a great solution. If you haven't seen what happens in stores, you know, where you have a pavilion, have a, enter to place people can sit, it's a multi-use facility. Maybe it just needs to be turned, go the other way or something. I mean, maybe just take it out of the field and flip it the other way around. But, you know, I just, that's a concern, just what are you going to do to the fields? And wanting to have the freedom to put events there and not worry about somebody putting a pole through a, through a pipe or something like that. The only other thing I would recommend is just, um, the next time you present this, put some labeling on it.
Yes.
That would be very helpful, whether it's in the public or it's just to us. I think labeling would really help and give us a good sense. But thank you, it's great work. And I'm, I'm going to also echo a little bit what Counselor McBride said in terms of some kind of budget numbers or something, so we can kind of talk from reality would be helpful. So, great, thank you.
I do think it's pretty clear though that the council likes the direction. So I think that's, yeah. And I think ideally, the, the aquatics would be at Claude Chester, all depending on price. Are there other existing sized, um, aquatic centers in Connecticut? You could get some information on how much, kind of their budget information at all?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Would it be very high level with a pretty happy range?
Just some starting stuff, yeah.
But it would be some starting ideas.
Depending on how you choose, you know, this might cost this range. Depending on how you choose, you know, this might cost this range, and then here's what you might be looking at for, you know, as a starting spot.
As we've discussed internally, you know, the, as Mark was kind of alluding to, a pool isn't always just a pool, right? And so, you know, at East Lime at the high school, when they put on their pool, they put in a pool and they put a metal shed basically over it, right? It's a very simple Butler-style building. It's as simple as you can get, but it serves the function. That could possibly work kind of behind the community center where you don't see it very much and you don't mind just a simple ugly building. And a location like Claude Chester where it's going to be kind of out there in the front, you're probably not putting up that low-cost building. It's going to be a little bit nicer, a little bit more glass and things like that. So, we can take some ballparks just to get you a rough idea to know what ball, no pun intended, but what ballpark you're in, yeah.
Counselor Bordelone?
Thank you. Yeah, but before, at the end of the last time I spoke, you had stated you'd put the lights in and stuff at Paquonic Plains, which was something I had brought forward and widening, so I'm really excited about that. And how are we, how is that being funded? Is that being tied into this, or that's going to come way before any of that? That's my first question.
We have a CIP.
Oh, perfect.
Our, I believe.
Yes, it was part of our per dollar, so it would not be included in the, the council approved $200,000 to do both conceptual designs and detailed designs for athletic fields on the Claude Chester property. But I get the sense that that's, we're not quite there yet. We're looking at kind of rough dollars. Is that...
I guess the what, yes, so...
Yeah, I guess, to be honest, I'm not really clear what our, what our marching orders are. You want numbers, how detailed numbers do you want? Because, you know, we've got the 200,000 to look at the fields at Claude Chester, to look at the fields at Sutton Park, and also to look at addressing the field needs at the high school. You know, but that's putting out an RFP, bringing a consultant onboard, and then spending months and months and months, you know, coming up with hard figures so that we've got a final dollar amount. Or, you know, Kenton Frost can say, yeah, based on what we've seen in the area, building a full-size soccer field is X, you know, you take that times two, you know, building a 50-70 field is, you know, Y, and, you know, we've got some general numbers. So, I guess, yeah, I guess if the council could, and I don't know, maybe I'm the only one that doesn't really know what the next step is, but...
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm excited to hear about the lights at Paquonic Plains Park, nothing else than the CIP and the widening, you know, and the per dollars, which I think that's a great use considering, you know, the need for outdoor recreation exercise and when they get in dark early. As far as this conceptual plan, again, I think they're all wonderful, but I'm a sole body, even though we are an elected body, we do need to lean on our community. And so, I do think at this point, there should be some type of press release and things in the paper saying, here's some conceptual drawings, here's where, you know, come out to this, you know, event on this night, and there needs to be the boards up, and then the council with the numbers and the public input, then you generate that thunder. Let's see, there might be a ton of people out there that really stand behind this pool. There might be some money out there that is, you know, they're considering swimming as a, you know, you know, as a economic, like, not economic driver, a social thing that, you know, community should have to be able to afford people the right to swim. It's a must. There might be some funding. But also, the size of the pool is very important because if it does go in that direction, I hate to handicap us on one end because of money, I'm only going to support a pool if it's going to be able to support the needs of the high school. Without that, we're still handicapping our pipeline and our system. The amount of money that the high school over the years has spent on busing the students every day for practice to and from, the cost to go to the pool daily during the season and off-season, I'd love if you guys could get a number about what the Board of Ed spends for the swimming budget. So, we, just one thing to say, we have a pool, but we need to make sure, in my opinion, I'm not saying I want a pool yet, I'm still waiting to hear how we all get there, but it needs to support that high school concept, or else it's just a kind of casual pool, which is nice, but we should try to find a way to link it in so that they, we have a place where high school competitive swimming could occur right here in our sports complex. So, again, as a council, yeah, it's beautiful, it's great. I need to hear from the community. They might say, no, I don't want any of this, and I only thought we were going to do this. Until we submit this forward and get more public information on it and get it in the paper and get it out there, we're kind of just, looks great, you know, oh, what's the numbers? We don't know. What's the impact? We don't know. We don't, you know, like, it's really kind of, you don't know. So, I really think our next step from here is really that public outreach. Get this in the paper that there's been the first proposal and designs, get people excited. There's no numbers yet, more to come, and we're looking for public input, and then we can start adding tax amount, dollars and costs to it. But right now, as a community, as a council, I feel our driving thing is now to bring this to our community and get everybody behind it, or not behind it. I can't, I think it's beautiful and great, but I do think we need direction from our community, and that's where our direction should come from.
I do think we will need some rough numbers. I've never been to one of these where the public's not asking, what does that cost? What does that cost? I think the broad rough numbers will be needed for that public.
Yeah.
Counselor Kessier?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
I just want to point out it's after 10 o'clock.
Okay. Is there consensus for the council to continue?
Yes. I just want to make sure we get to the last item.
Postpone to the next meeting.
Oh, as?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I would like rough numbers before we go to the community because I don't want to go empty-handed, and I think we've already went to the community to ask them what they wanted, come up with some designs, some renderings, and now I think, before we go back to the community, we should have some kind of rough numbers. So, I would like numbers before we go back to the community myself because I don't understand the purpose of going to the community just to show them the renderings without the numbers. So, and then have to go back again with the numbers later on, so I personally would like the numbers first. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just quickly ask a question? Is there, is there a baseball league right now that is requesting a 50-70 league, or is it sort of like, there's a need for a 50-70 field, and if we build one, we know that a legal form?
No, Mystic Little League has approached the Parks and Recreation Department in converting one of the existing fields to a 50-70 field.
Okay, but, but they just can't, they can't sacrifice the Little League field size?
Well, that's what we need to determine. Yeah, that's what we need to determine is if, did I say Mystic had approached, Groton Little League?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Groton, I misspoke. Groton Little League has approached us about creating a 50-70 field. That, the current field that both Groton Little League and Mystic Little League uses, if we convert it to a 50-70 field, Mystic Little League may, would lose the ability to play on that field, or would have to make accommodations to play on that field, and given that they're playing in a few different places, if they determined that they needed to, they needed that space and couldn't go somewhere else, then that could significantly impact Mystic Little League.
Okay, so there's a request for a 50-70 field?
Right.
However, we, we can't convert one of the Little League fields to that because then we won't have enough regular Little League fields?
Potentially. Or Mystic Little League can say, no, actually, we can get by by playing here, here, and here.
Okay. Just my opinion, I think the next step probably is you just take all three of your options and probably have a fourth option, which is no pool, and then, you know, have an append, and you have just price estimates on each one, very high level, not detailed, just estimates, one, two, three, four, least expensive to most expensive. I like to think, rather than in dollars, I like to think in mil rates, but if you do it like in dollars, or something that people can understand, like, say, like, this much increase on a $200,000 house, or something like that, because that's sort of how I like to think in budget time. But just sort of, if the question you're asking is, is this the direction you want to go in, my answer is yes. But anything more, like, which one do you want? Do you want this? Do you want that? Where do you want this to go? I think personally, just needs a little more cost estimate. I just need a little more information based on about how much it would cost, because obviously, in the ideal situation, you have that, you have the, I don't think we need the 50-meter swimming pool because the swimming, Avery Point is a 20, I think it's actually 25 yards there. Maybe you need 25 meter, but that is the ideal situation. Obviously, that's the most cost prohibitive. So, it's just, I think you need the, the cost-benefit analysis in order to sort of make a decision. But I think basically, you just come with your four options, cost estimates, very high level, and then people can start saying, I think I like this one more than that. So, that's just how I feel. But the whole concept in general, this is what I think the use for this land should be. So, Counselor McBride, do you have...
Yeah, thank you. I agree with the cost information that's necessary, but if you could also include operational costs or maintenance costs, because I think that comes into play, especially with the aquatic center, or whatever we're calling it. And maybe if you can include cost for demolition and site cleanup as well, so we see the big picture of what it will cost. But I just had one question. We hear, you know, I've heard over the last year or so that we don't have a lot of sport fields and that we need more and more, and I'm not disagreeing with that, but in my past, I think Groton's done a great job with the number of ball fields that have increased from Paquonic Plains Park, and you're doing stuff in the community center, and then you have all the new schools with all their sports fields. So, I have a question that, it's more of a perception. I feel like there's more, there's a lot more fields, but maybe they're not being utilized because the schools aren't, the schools are only utilizing it for the school's purpose. Is that true, or do we have like a joint use of facility or field agreement where the schools will rent it to clubs? Because I don't, I see a lot of these new fields not being used at the schools.
So, I'll jump in real quick. So, we have an overall reduction of number of total fields over the last 25 years. We've built new fields with the schools, but we've built fewer fields than were there previously. We do have the full quantity of every single field, so we've been doing the assessment for probably 10 years or something. When we first designed the school, the fields, it should have gone on merit before the school went there, we did a full breakdown of everything then. Our, and if you remember, I presented it probably a couple of years ago now, we kind of have what we call the field equivalent, basically. So, the lower quality of the field, the lower scores because you can't use it as much. We have fewer fields, but they're now newer fields and a little bit better use, so we actually have more functionality out of the fields, even though we have fewer fields. We still need, based on our needs assessment, we still need a lot of fields in order to get to the point to where we're, we're meeting our need. And so, it is a perception that there's more fields. I think it's just because we can see some of them, especially, you know, in high visibility areas where you drive by and see a new field that looks like a new field. But in the, in the case of the middle school, we now have one middle school that has a single softball field, a multipurpose field, and a practice field. And we went from being a community that had three middle schools that had all of those facilities in three different places. And then the elementary schools, as they were built, and the parking expanded and things like that, like what used to be Cutler had multiple fields, it's now down to a single field. So, there is a reduction in total fields, even though we have built some, we're still a net loss. As far as the use with the schools, we do, I say we, youth sport programs do get to use most fields that are available on the schools. It's a bit of a pain to do so. For anything park and rec, the youth programs go through, just park and rec can kind of rent the fields that way. For the schools, you have to go to the Board of Ed, get permission there, and then they go to each principal, and you have to get permission from each principal for every single day you want to use it. So, it's a little bit more challenging. They are open, you know, not nearly as much as, as the park and rec fields are, but they are utilized, most are, you know, it's like Claude Chester was the one that most people used. I think the new elementary school, what is it, Thames River, with that baseball field, that's a full-size baseball field, so it's only available for older kids. And then the fields at Mystic Magnet are pretty small and not as functional. And then the field, the new fields up at the middle school, great field, I don't, you know, I don't think any youth team has gotten to play on the new turf field just because it's so, and so much demand. I mean, that's, that's really the only field that the high school has for practicing. And even football, who normally likes to practice on their practice facility, is now asking to practice on that turf because they don't have any turf to practice on, and they need that experience for games. So, so that new field is highly, you know, used, and then the softball field is just starting to get into use because it was natural surface, you had to wait a year before you could get into use on both that practice area and that softball field. So, that's might be why you haven't seen...
Okay, yeah, no, thank you for that. You explained it perfectly about the consolidation, ended up decreasing the number of fields, so I get that. I just wonder if there's a way, and I don't know how we do this, maybe it's the town manager, how we get a way to work with the schools to allow them to, for more utilization of their fields, because it seems like that's an area for an opportunity at least.
In our assessment, we counted them as much as they're available to the public, right? So, once school and all the after-school activities are done and they're available, then we started counting those hours in our, the detailed assessment we did for how many hours we need of each field type.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, just saying, again, great, great meeting tonight, really important topics. But, you know, just, you know, we heard tonight, a few councils shared about the importance of public inputs. And in the past, I know the mayor and I talked about this, especially after the new term taking over as a personal appointments committee chair. But we had talked about how the NRZ, for example, the Neighborhood Revitalization Zone, there is a committee that used to be called the Fort Hill Area Neighborhood, I think, Revitalization Committee, and it was created by ordinance in the early 2000s, and it was essentially a committee for Paquonic Bridge, community members in Paquonic Bridge to discuss issues, and I think just given issues and, you know, issues of importance to the community. So, I think, just given the focus that I think this council has put on, on that neighborhood, whether it's, you know, the Community Connectivity Grant that we just received, also, you know, now that talks about expanding the sports fields and the reuse for Claude Chester, I think we need to be intentional in, you know, forstanding, oh, we need community inputs, then we need to also do our due diligence and recruit volunteers and enlist community members to be active participants in this discussion. So, I think that could be an avenue to really start engaging the public in a, or the neighborhood in a proactive and meaningful manner, as opposed to just us top-down council, town staff, and, you know, and kind of asking them, and telling them what they want. And so, I think that could be an avenue where, you know, we could have very authentic feedback in just, you know, especially as we're doing more and more, you know, charades and, you know, community events. So, that's just one item, and again, as, you know, Counselor Bordelone brought up, the needs to, if we were to have a pool, allow for a high school to utilize it, and I think that, that's a no-brainer. There's no reason why we should bus, you know, our kids out, you know, to Avery Point or wherever. I mean, it's, we used to have a functional pool at the Pratt Center, I grew up learning how to swim there, and, and so, you know, our community deserves that now, and, you know, certainly believe our high school kids, you know, could benefit from that as well. And I forgot to mention as well that you brought up the splash pad, Counselor Jones, you know, that, that no matter what happens, I think there needs to be a splash pad in Groton. We don't have one, most communities do. And again, thank you for, for this discussion. One piece that wasn't mentioned is housing, and I still believe, you know, and we received the Community Connectivity Grant that addresses some of those needs, but I do think holistically, when we look at all the town land, you know, we get focused to that as well.
Thank you. Any other hands? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for all the information, and we look forward to hearing back.
Thank you.
Our last agenda item will be postponed, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Parker, seconded by Jones. On favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, we adjourn unanimously at 10:22.